Hi, I was just reading.
Yeah, no worries.
Aaron's coming, I'm just.
She is on her way.
Okay, good evening, everybody. It is January 22nd, and I will start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools is a forward-thinking district that cultivates the academic and social-emotional growth of each student through a supportive, collaborative, innovative, and challenging environment. Students will develop into self-motivated, resilient, lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. Our order of business this evening, and we are being recorded by WACA cable TV, our order of business this evening will include our call to order, opening procedures, agenda review and adoption, time for some public comment, items of interest to the public, administrative items include the Mindes educational program update, the Mindes school building update, grade configuration presentation, APS and advocates community counseling partnership, policy update, IMG animals in schools, superintendent's report, assistant superintendent's report, Warren approvals. The consent actions include the approval of minutes of January 8th, 2020, acceptance of gifts and donations, committee reports of activities, member updates, action items, and then we will adjourn. And I'm thinking we're gonna flip.
Yeah, if we could, two things. One, I just want to say thank you for being flexible with regard to tonight's timing. There was obviously some confusion at the high school and the middle school with regard to a presentation that originally was scheduled for tomorrow evening, but tomorrow evening they're using the auditorium to discuss the Nyanza cleanup, the continued cleanup of Nyanza. So when our team went to actually schedule the room, which it's rare that they actually just go in and schedule the room, they noticed it was taken. So they had to move the step up night for the eighth grade to this evening, which is seven, and I know we have at least one committee member who has a incoming ninth grader next year and would like to attend.
I was.
But I felt the two topics, because our administrative team is here this evening, we still needed to, I wanted everyone to hear the presentations. So thank you for being flexible there. Thank you for WACA, for being flexible to make sure it's recorded and out there in the public. So that's one. Two, because again, we have other events going on, Sarah has preschool signup tonight, open house, I would like to just flip the Mindes school update grade configuration presentation because that impacts pre-K through five first, before we get into, you know, Mike's presentation as to where things are with regard to the programming update and the things that have been happening within the school specifically. So if that's okay, before you get into the public comment, those are the two changes I'd like to make.
Excellent. Everybody okay with that order of business?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So moving forward, first want to ask if there are any members of the public that would like to make comment? None? We will start with the Mindes school building update.
So I will, I'll just give the over, like, no, Mike, go ahead, please go up. I'll just give the overlay as to the process that, so far that we're undertaking, and tonight is truly just about providing information to the committee as well as the community. And this presentation, I did give it to our IT folks to be online for tomorrow. So it should be there for tomorrow on the front page of the, of the public school website. And as you know, as part of the building project, we are looking at numerous options with regard to the facilities, whether it's actually a new building, a renovated Mindes, et cetera. But along with that, and the options that we've been provided, or we have provided to the MSBA, we have a 635 enrollment option, which is three through five, and then we have an 845 student enrollment option, which is a two through five. The complexity is we have to make some decisions by the end of February in terms of what the configuration will look like. Not what a facility will look like, not where it's going to be, but what we need to move forward to continue to investigate. That's really the key. So we met as an administrative team, that's the first step, to talk about the challenges and the benefits of a two-five. We know what we have currently in terms of pre-K separate building, a K-two, and a three-five building. We know what that looks like. So we wanted to first start with presenting to you all in the community what we view, and then get feedback, and there's a slide at the end Mike will present, as to how we'll continue to engage those to get more feedback on this. But no votes, not asking you to do any of that, just ask good, solid questions about what we see as benefits and challenges to the process, and go from there. So I'll turn it over to Mike.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Adams. I appreciate the time to be able to discuss these different strengths and challenges, or benefits and challenges of the grade two to five configuration. One other piece of information I think is important to share is that we have a group that is part of the Mindes building committee, which is an educational building committee component, which is made up of some teachers in our building, as well as one of our school psychologists, and we have met, and we've also had a greater committee that's invited certain individuals from our district to sit and meet, and many of those conversations have revolved around the different configurations and how it would impact the entire community as well as the specific student population that would be coming to Mindes, as well as the teaching staff. So all of that information, along with that administrative conversation, has culminated in us being able to have this presentation for you tonight.
Yeah, and let me just, I'll chime in last time, Mike, and I'll let you go through it, but I do want to make sure that we do have, you know, the educators from Warren, Pittaway, Mindes, as well as Jen Cutler, Director of Social and Learning, as well as Kathy Silva, Director of Student Services. Their input is critical to this, right? So it impacts the entire district, pre-K through five. So should you have questions, they're here to answer that as well. That's why I moved it up in the schedule.
So right now, it's important to sort of look at our current enrollment, because that plays a role, and we are looking at this in terms of our current numbers. Obviously, any renovation or new building would be in the future, but this is what we have in front of us as of, as of at least yesterday, 2020. At Warren School and Pittaway, so at Warren, there are 10 classes of kindergarteners with a class size of average 19, and I'm not going to read the entire slide, you can obviously read it yourselves, but this shows you the amount of students that we do have currently at the Warren Elementary School. And then, in terms of our preschool enrollment for the current year, you see that we have 94 students that are enrolled at the Pittaway Elementary School. Pittaway uses seven classrooms. They have three half-day programs, two full day, and then two specialized programming, and there's also a specialized space for our occupational therapist, physical therapist, and our speech and language pathologist, where students are seen intermittently throughout the entire day. So that room is utilized on a regular basis. At Mindes, similarly, we have current three grades, we have a three through five, a single graded population. You can see in general, the class size fluctuates between 23 and 25, but we also have our current multi-grade population. So you can see that we have 160 students in that configuration for our, what is, you know, commonly referred to as the neighborhood program. Forty-five students in grade three, 55 in grade four, and 60 in grade five. So it just gives you a quick snapshot of the current population in the buildings. So as we look to see how we would incorporate grade two potentially into the current three through five model, it's important to see that there are some benefits and some challenges. And I think the largest benefit from a community standpoint and from an educational standpoint is the ability to now form what would become a true early childhood learning center. Obviously, it would still be the Warren Elementary School, but if the second graders came over to the Mindes School, you would now have room at the Warren Elementary School for our preschool students who are currently at Pittaway to move over to Warren. This has a lot of benefits, especially the fact that you now would have one less transition for our youngest students. And the other huge benefit there is that there'd be an additional access to curricular resources for that student population, and the ability for teachers to talk to each other, and for our kindergarten teachers to actually have immediate access to our preschool teachers for great conversations that are so important in terms of making sure students are constantly getting what they need. We'll talk about all these different strengths throughout, but I think it's really important to highlight that particular benefit of this potential move. I'm not going to read every single one of the bullet points, but I think it's important to sort of highlight a few of the, a few of them that are very, are very important. And one of that, as I said, is that continuity of the early intervention, and the ability for us to identify students at a really early age and to have that continuity of service delivery between buildings. I think we do a great job right now, so I certainly don't want to, you know, downplay the tremendous job that is done between the Warren School and Pittaway, but as a former principal of Warren, I know how important that relationship is with Pittaway, and to move those students into the building itself would create a wonderful dynamic for all the teachers and leadership team involved that would really benefit the children. It would also open up some space at Warren. As you know, there's currently some serious space constraints there. There have been space constraints continually for many years. Obviously, moving Pittaway students and staff into Warren would take up some of that space, but there would be ample room for the Pittaway students to move effectively into that building. Now, in terms of the two-to-five model, it would also offer great opportunity for our students in two through five. Similar to the continuity that you'd have for students in pre-K to one, you have that same continuity for students in two through five. It would improve that transition process that we have. You think about that early elementary to upper elementary model that we currently have, it would, it would, it would still be there that we would know that we'd have second graders, but we'd now be able to really incorporate that transition piece much easier and allow for students to have a better transition to third grade, and for teachers to have greater access to one another. You see up here that says access to curricular resources. One of the things that is a challenge for our teachers often is that we don't have easy access to those lower-level materials that sometimes our students need when they come to us in the third grade. If our second graders were with us, we'd have easier access to those resources to make sure all students are getting what they need every single day. Again, the continuity that it creates, we talk about role modeling, it's important for our pre-K students to see the older students, and also it allows our fifth grade students to still continue to mentor not only the third grade students, but now also our second grade students. This would allow for some clustering, as well as we talked about, the potential reconfiguration of the model at Mindes itself. It gives us an opportunity to think about how we could incorporate a two-three model in a four-five model. Obviously, no decisions have been made, and we'll talk about that later on tonight, but it does open up that opportunity. I think one thing that's oftentimes downplayed too is that relationship between administration and parents and children. Being able to be with a specific population of students for a longer period of time, that's great. You get to know kids, you get to know parents, you create those relationships with people for four years, you can truly get to know them, and if you are with a child and a family from grade two through five, those relationships can be built upon. I think that Dr. Vier would probably agree that the opportunity to have true curricular alignment as well offers just such a wonderful opportunity. I mean, we're aligned, but specifically now as we move to a new literacy program within, I shouldn't even use the word program, but a new literacy model within the context of our elementary grades, having that continuity between grades two, three, four, and five would really be a wonderful opportunity for our, for our students. Now, with this comes challenges. I would be crazy if I didn't say that having a building of 845 students would be a challenge. It's a large school building, it's a large school building for small children to be in. There's a lot of kids, there's a lot of staff, it's a big population. Grade two students would now be integrated with grade five students. Do I think that that could be, happen, you know, successfully? Yes, but I think some folks would, would see that as a potential challenge, and that folks would need to have some, you know, steps taken, and we would have to take some steps to appropriately make sure that the students were acting in a proper manner with second graders on a bus with fifth graders. And, you know, similar to why I said it was, it's a great thing for students to be with you for four years, for some students, that's not perfect. Some students do need that change, so it's a long time in front of one school, it's a long time with the same voice, or potentially the same voice. And then there are just some logistical things. You know, we have early start times here for our elementary students, and having second graders start early could be a challenge for some of those younger students, but, you know, it's, again, things that are doable, we can, we can work around, but providing lunch for four, for four grade levels, where you have student populations of over 200, can make for a very challenging environment in terms of how you can logistically supervise that and make sure students are getting through the line in an efficient manner. Staffing has both benefits and challenges as well. Okay, so as we talked about, there's this access to curriculum, which, which helps. The great collaboration that we could have between our teachers, I think that's a huge strength. Right now, because we are on different schedules, it makes it very difficult for our second and third grade teachers to collaborate, as well as our pre-K and K teachers. Putting folks in the same building offers that opportunity. Now, some may say, now, now you're just creating a challenge for the first grade to collaborate with the second grade, but I think there's something to be said for the fact that our first and second grade teachers have been working together for such a long time, they know each other so well, and they are well-versed in each other's curriculum because they've spent so much time with one another. So it helps now to, to close that gap by having our second grade teachers join our third grade population, as well as having our preschool population join our kindergarten teachers. That has never happened, well, at least hasn't happened for quite some time. I think that move was made shortly before I arrived in Ashland, but allowing that true early childhood center would, would, would improve the collaboration between those grade That increased vertical collaboration is obviously what I speak of. One less building to schedule and travel for shared staff. We have a number of shared staff in our school. Our PT is shared, we have some shared OT, we have some shared staff in our, mainly in our special education department in general. Allowing them to have one less building to travel to certainly helps them with efficiency. You think about lost time for travel. You would now have less buildings to go through, so you, you just picked up valuable time to be able to make sure students are getting what they need when they need it. And, and that, with it comes challenges. Now, you have to think about some reconfiguration of that service delivery, and potentially how you're reconfiguring staff, not only for special education, but also for some unified arts staff as well. If we have, if, you know, a new population of students who is joining one school, what happens to our current unified arts staff? Does there have to be a reconfiguration there? Do some of those folks have to come over with the second grade population to make sure our schedule can, can work at Mindes? So those are things that could become a challenge. Shifting caseload for service providers, those things are challenges that we'll have to deal with. There could be, I don't want to say there's going to be, but there could be some contractual things we'll have to look at, and obviously, we're going to have to have close conversations with our union representatives, with the AEA, to ensure that we're on top of any potential contract impacts, but that's on the forefront of our thinking, and we would want to be sure to have those ongoing conversations to be on top of any potential issues that may arise there. I think probably the biggest challenge for an administrator and for the entire school is that culture shift. When you bring a new population of students, a new population of teachers into a building, it changes the culture of a building. Now, we, we have great staff, we have staff that's welcoming, we have staff that works so collaboratively and so well together, but you'd have to make sure that we worked hard to ensure a, a new culture, because that's what's going to happen. I've been involved in situations where schools have been closed and teachers have been forced to go into different schools. That, that's troublesome at times, so it would be very important that we took the time and offered up opportunities to ensure that a positive culture was built within the school, and we're welcoming not only the new students, but the new staff members. One other thing that we should take note of is there's a 48-month, 48-month rule, for lack of a better term, in terms of students who can be housed together in specialized programming. So now, if you have some of our students that are placed in a specialized program for significant educational work that's outside the regular education setting, you have to make sure that we're not putting students together that are aged too far apart from one another. If we have grade two students and grade five students in the same school, we have to be cognizant of that to make sure that we're not, we're not getting into that gap. There's a transportation impact, you know, but there's obviously, again, benefits and challenges. It could definitely provide a better flow at Warren. Anybody who has dealt with the dismissal and arrival at Warren will tell you that that can be a difficult part of someone's day. I think the things that Mr. Regan has done to change that has made it very effective, but it's still, it's still a long wait, it's still a challenge, it's still traffic. This would improve that, that flow of traffic and that traffic pattern. There would be less students in and out of that building, therefore, there'd be less traffic, obviously. It would create a greater amount of parking for events at Warren. Everybody knows that, you know, Warren School is limited in parking, as are our other schools, but we would be able to fix that problem at the Mindes School with the design of the new building, or the renovation of the new building, which would allot for an additional amount of students that would be brought to us. So while Warren would be fixed due to less numbers, Mindes would be designed to make sure they were incorporating a better traffic pattern. Challenges, again, that early start time for grade two students, having them get up all the, much earlier. How would it impact the design flow if the new Mindes building was put at the middle school? That's a potential challenge, but that's, again, if that's at the middle school, we'd have to really carefully work with our design specialists to make sure everybody was on board with how to make that efficient. Midday pickup and dismissal for pre-K, what that would do, it would just be a challenge for scheduling, and it's a challenge for make sure that Mr. Regan and Ms. Davidson were working together to collaborate on that, just causes one other logistical thing for them to worry about, and there'd be a potential need for a late bus. So these are just challenges that we have to be wary of. So there are obviously some ancillary benefits. I, you know, Mr. Adams could probably add to this a little bit. I think, though, that one of the major benefits to this would be that we'd have the ability to close a building, potentially. So you'd have the ability to close Pittaway, and if, in fact, we were going to a two-five model and it was ultimately voted upon, then you would move the, the new Mindes, if that's happens, to the middle school, which is the potential site, one of the potential sites, you would, in fact, now gain two potential properties. And that, that to me is a, is a huge benefit for our entire community at large, because there's so much potential when you start working with that type of space. Obviously, Mr. Adams, you can speak more to some of these other benefits.
Sure. So let me just give you the, the ancillary piece first with the Pittaway. So we're estimating in the very near future that Pittaway is going to cost upwards of $900,000 to repair, just to keep it open for the pre-K. And that, a roof, a boiler system, there's tremendous wood rot throughout, I mean, the building was built in 1928, and, you know, so a new generator, so there's lots of things wrong with Pittaway, and, but that being said, if we move to a pre-K through one model and we don't use the facility, we don't have to invest in that as well. So if we don't, we will need to invest in that facility, no matter what, that's what's going to have to happen, in order to continue it as a pre-K building.
Just on that, Jim.
Sure.
These expenses that don't have to be incurred within the timeframe that we're looking at the building project on.
That's correct. So if, if we're looking at opening in 2023, a new, you know, whether it are Mindes or renovated Mindes, the goal is September of 2023, we, we could hold off on these expenses and repairs, absolutely. So we still have to do some repairs in order to make it work, but not to the extent of the $900,000. So then, potential next steps, I think what's important is, and then I'll open it up to have, you have questions of the staff as well, is that we need to continue to get input, right, from Pittaway staff, Warren staff, the Mindes staff, through the principals and asking those questions, you know, from a educational standpoint, from a curriculum standpoint, what do they see as the benefits and the challenges to it as well? It's all well and good that the admin team got together as, as the leaders of the facilities to talk about the challenges and the benefits of it, but again, it's a true impact on students and staff, and we want to make sure we hear their voice, but also, the community voice is important to us. And, you know, again, I'm not asking for any votes this evening, and, and we're looking at a month-long receiving of feedback. Our next meeting is not until February, into February.
Would we be voting then?
We would need to have a decision made on configuration. There's, there's no votes in terms of, we could get into the MSBA process.
Right.
And the MSBA could say, you know, from a building standpoint, well, you may have recommended two-five, but they might come back and say, we prefer you go to a three-five model for cost reasons.
Right.
It's potential. It would be rare for them if we put a three-five model forward to say, well, why don't you think about increasing it to two-five? It's sort of, it works in reverse a little bit.
It's easier to, yeah.
It's easier to say, we'll, we'll grant more, less money than typically the more money. But, so there'll be a couple of things. One is, you know, through my email to the, the community, seeking direct feedback on those slides, to the chair, you know, posting a three or four question survey also to the community to gather that feedback, just in terms of their thoughts on it. Keep it simple, but keep it data-driven where we can at least look at what the community is thinking. And then, by the 26th, we need to determine what that grade configuration will look like so we can move forward at the Mindes School building process, and Paul will maybe talk a little bit about that tonight in his update, what our next steps are, even though we talked about it at the last meeting. So that's where we are, and again, I have, you know, the, the principals and the directors here, because I think it's important to hear from them, should you have questions about the two-five. Again, like I said, we know what the three-five looks like, it's the challenges, what is a two-five and what is a pre-K through one look like? I think the excitement, and it's palpable with admin, and even talking to a lot of staff as I walk through, that pre-K through one is really exciting, is an early childhood learning.
I see heads nodding.
Yeah, well, and just talking to staff.
That means you're sort of all in agreement.
Yeah.
Where, at least from an educational perspective.
Yeah. I mean, there are challenges, right? A two-five, and Mike has laid it out, with 845 students, that's, that's a big building.
Yeah.
And we know we can mitigate those things, I'm not, I'm just saying, it's a legitimate concern.
Mike wants a K-five.
Well, Mike's has always wanted a K-five, but Gabby's shaking her head too, but, but that's not feasible. We're not building a K-five. So let's be clear. The MSBA really was clear with us.
The MSBA would not.
It's either a three-five, or it's a two-five.
If we want their money.
Period. If you want their money.
Jim, so if we did go to a two-five, would you, so because of that many students, would you anticipate a principal and two assistants?
Yeah. So great question, right? So we did not get into the staffing piece, right? We were just looking at it from the benefits of a child that we think.
Yes, right, yeah.
There are staff concerns, certainly, but our initial diagnosis of staffing was, so you, we have 10 second grade classrooms, those 10 teachers just go, right? So you're not adding staff, we're moving the entire population of teachers.
Right.
With the students, those 10 individuals. The tricky part is, what do you do with your administrative team, right? So, well, we have Sarah who's at Pittaway, and we, and, you know, we have Kate who's at Warren. So we figure something out in terms of one of them moves to the bigger school, so you have two assistants. We're not looking at necessarily decreasing staff.
Yeah.
There could be, there could be some redundancy in there, for sure, where we may not need the same amount of staff, but there's, could also be opportunities, as we look at our staffing, we may have to add some positions as well. We've advocated for a number of years for our fourth team chair position. Every year, we talk about the need for another special ed coordinator position, and because of not only the overlapping of the buildings, but the number of kids that we have to test in the team meetings that we have. So we are given that thought, but we didn't feel as though that decision is.
Right.
What should drive the configuration.
Sure.
At this point.
And in our conversation, we've talked about it a bunch, the, the goal, or really expectation would be a net neutral.
Neutral, right.
Yeah.
Kind of situation, so either movement, or hey, we no longer need these two positions, office positions, or something like that, but we do need here, and it would probably offset or come pretty close, so.
Right. Could I ask Mike a few questions?
Of course.
Actually, just, I think it's one two-parter and a Actually, just, I think it's one two-parter and I'd be interested in hearing, you know, anybody else who has an opinion on it. But I think there are two things that I'd like to hear a little more about. And one is, and this goes back to when we were on the Space Needs Committee, and I first knew you wanted a K-through-five. Because when I said it, he says, I like that. But we, one of the things we talked a lot about then was the transitions. And you've made a reference to the fact that we'd be reducing transitions if we took the Pittaway offline and created this model. So one, one question is sort of if you can talk in a little more detail about what the benefit to students is of transition, fewer transitions, part one, and then part two. Could you give a little bit more sort of about the real educational benefits of the early education model? Like, I hear you talk about it, it makes common sense, but I'm not like feeling what, what changes when you go to that design rather than what we have now.
Yeah, and I, and I think I'll also make sure that we call, I hate to put them on the spot, but I think that, you know, Ms. Davidson and Mr. Regan could probably add that, that as well. But from, from my perspective, taking away a transition at such a young age is such a positive. So when we allow our students to enter the preschool, now they're in the environment where they're going to be for at least three years so they can really get to know that environment. That preschool to kindergarten transition is not only big for students, but I also think it's really important for parents. So, you know, we, we, obviously, we have to make all of our decisions about the kids, but you're now allowing parents to get used to a school, get used to administration, get used to the teaching staff and understand that these are, these are philosophies that are shared throughout a district, but now it's not only that it's a district-wide philosophy, it's just within one school. And, and students can get used to those routines and they can get used to where they're going and they can feel more comfortable now and sort of grow as a, at sometimes 2.9. So now, now you've got, because we shouldn't just think of it as three years for these students. Some of these students will be in that school for much longer than that. So if they're entering our, our population as a 2.9-year-old, they're going to be there for several years, not just the three that they'll be, you know, pre-K, K, and one. So I think there's a lot to be said for that and they get to get used to that building and, and they, they now do not have to have a big transition as a four-and-a-half to five-year-old.
I guess what I was remembering, Mike, is some of the research we looked at at that time really talked about the positive benefit, the anxiety that comes with transitions for a lot of kids.
Sure.
And that just generally, as I recall, and I assume you're much more fluent in this than I am, that basically shrinking the number of transitions was better for kids and, and helped them be academically successful throughout.
So that social emotional component is huge, right? Any, anytime you can shrink the number of transitions for students is only going to help them in terms of their anxiety, which will lead to students being more ready to learn and being able to become easily, easily access the curriculum. But I think it all comes down to the fact that now they're used to the routine. So I want to sort of get into that nitty-gritty of it all, and that's why. So you're absolutely right. Those anxieties will disappear because they know the building and they know the faces in front of them and they're used to seeing the same people. And, you know, there, there's still obviously always going to be transitions in the life of kids and we'll still have a transition for first graders to second graders. But you're taking that first transition and making it for a, a, you know, six, six-and-a-half-year-old as opposed to a four-to-four-and-a-half-year-old, or a four-and-a-half-to-five-year-old. So I, I think that's also, you know, really important because they're a little bit more apt to be able to transition more effectively at that age, a little later. So, yeah, any, I think, anytime you're able to push that back, I think it's really doing justice for the students. I also don't think we should underplay the, the importance of the teachers because now you have more easy access for kindergarten teachers to go down and speak directly to our preschool staff. They can go down and they can watch these students. They can get to know these students. They're seeing them in the hallways regularly. They're saying hello to them. That assists in transitions. We, we talk about the importance of that community environment for our teachers. If, if they're able to have immediate access to the prior year's teacher for a quick conversation, that's, that's a really special opportunity for, for our kids. It's only going to positively benefit children. In, in terms of that early education environment that we'd be building, it's all those things that come into place now. It's about, with, with early education and, and, you know, we've got two folks who are, are experts over there as well, so I call to you. I don't consider myself an expert by any stretch. But, but anytime you can provide an opportunity for students to become regulated to routines, that is so helpful. And our, and our, you know, the great population of our students, the pre-K, are students that really need that specialized instruction. We're talking about our most unique learners. Allowing them to have those routines ingrained is, is so very important at that young age. And it would allow for that continuity and collaboration between staff to, to make sure we're offering kids exactly what they need at those really early intervention stages. There's so much research about the importance of early intervention. And now to have everybody housed in one building, it's only going to assist in our literacy instruction. It's only going to assist in, in students' confidence levels. It's only going to assist with how they're accessing all the different areas of the curriculum.
Anyone, you guys?
Anybody else?
Kathy, from a, I think, I think from a standpoint of, of Director of Student Services, I think it's critically important. We've had this conversation, so if you just want to share your thoughts about the early childhood model, pre-K through one, it'd be welcome. I know you're, you, you want the sympathy with the crutch. I get it. Right, yeah.
We could, we could just turn one of these that way.
We could turn it around if you want to sit there.
I don't think it's, Kathy is fine, but I'm getting the sympathy, but with the crutch.
Kathy's been back on work for two days now, so we've, we've got her here late.
So, and I didn't know I would be speaking, so I'm a little bit ill-prepared. But what I will say is I am pretty passionate about the, the thought to have both an early childhood center but also having a two-to-five model. And if I go on and on and on, somebody's going to have to cut me off. Okay, that's good. I'm, I'm really glad about that piece of it, so thank you. From the early childhood perspective, I think what we have to remember about early development is that it's a scatter. And so you have typically, for all students, some promotion of skills, but not consistent in all skills. And that is what you expect from little children. And so you might have a child who cognitively is getting it. They've got their ABCs. They've got their shapes. They've got their colors. They still haven't figured out how to regulate their little bodies. And that's okay. It's still what they're kind of figuring out and developing. So when you have an early transition, so you're sending them off at kindergarten where the expectation is that, yes, we're going to still work on regulation and getting routines, but you're also ramping up a little bit in terms of the cognitive academic skills, the, the scatter becomes a little bit more challenging for them. And you've just introduced this transition where they're dealing with people they don't know. And while Mr. Regan is an awesome administrator, he's not Ms. Davidson. So it's a new person to have to get used to who's greeting you in the morning and, oh, it's a guy. And that's different. And hey, this building is huge by comparison to Pittaway. And it's only on one floor and all those other changes that can occur. So I, I think when you, you think about the momentum that kids are building when they're going from three to four and then having to transition into kindergarten, you take a step back because they have to have that transition time. And with a early childhood model, you don't have that kind of stepping back and, and having that space of adapting or adjusting to that transition so that you can keep building and evening out the scatter of the skill development. So that by the time they're leaving the building, entering into second grade, you've got a more evenness to what their profile looks like. They have their behavior regulation in better shape. They have their ability to share, take turns and engage with friends in a better spot. That does not mean they're done yet. I'm still working on some of those skills myself. But you have them in a better space, which I think then promotes the ability to have strong academic foundational learning. So again, and I, I am an educator, I'm passionate about that, but I am more passionate about character development and social emotional development. And this is why having Jen Cutler here as a team member is just so awesome because what works well in life is really that social emotional skill development for people. And I think we gain an awful lot with that early child center for the kids in terms of getting them at a better spot with their social emotional learning and development, their behavior regulation, their ability to share, take turns, deal with frustrations, engage in, okay, I know what I need and what I like, but now I'm interested in also what you like and what you need and I know how to build friendship. And so that's just going to promote kind of a good self-image as they start to ramp up those expectations of, what do you mean I have to figure out what a dip-thong is or whatever, in terms of understanding basic foundational literacy skills or understanding a little bit of higher-order math skills than the basic counting one to 10 or one to 100. So from those perspectives, I get very excited. Now, if I put on my student services hat a little bit.
That was my, my question.
It also gets me very excited because it allows for, I think, a better quality chunk of time at that early development where we can really hit kids hard with the good interventions and services that they need in that pre-K to first grade that helps them kind of get their skill set solid and in respect to their profile so that they can take that next step academically. I think it sometimes is very painful that we, both ourselves professionally and then with parents, talk about, ooh, do we need to think about giving this child another year at the preschool model when all of their, you know, classmates and, and peers are moving on because we're still having grave concerns about where they're at. And while, you know, they're young and sometimes that's a necessary and important kind of consideration to have, I think it is significant. And so we want to make those decisions very carefully and, and thoughtfully. And I think having that early child center might alleviate some of those moments because you have that extra time. So you have a, you know, three-year-old, a four-year-old, a kindergarten and a first grade timeframe to be helping students build some of their skills when you know full well that the reason why they're in special education is because they have that unique profile. So they have to be kind of not only developing the skills that everyone else is developing in each of those years, but they have to also be kind of closing that gap if they can and paying attention to the unique needs that they might have. So that piece of it excites me. Then if I look at the two-through-five model, because that's the other side of the coin, again, while I'm respectful of Mr. Kyra's comment about, and he's correct, you have to be cognizant of, you can't have instructional groupings of four years or, or greater. That's not appropriate. And if you do, you have to get waivers and parental approval, et cetera. That you do have an opportunity of the, having kids have a longer period of time with the same staff members to promote their skill development and to promote and look at what those unique areas are that we're trying to build that are part of the reason why they're receiving special education services. So again, we have longer periods of time with a consistent staffing that it might not be the same teacher necessarily and that's a part of it, but they're all within the same building and they can all do that, you know, good conversations together that support student growth and opportunity. And we, you know, kind of miss out on that opportunity because of the way our model is. I will be frank in saying that I also am a big fan of a K-to-five model, so I did come into this a little bit with a slant. But I think the other piece is it does afford us that opportunity of allowing the older students to pair nicely with a mentoring modeling program for the younger students. It would be really exciting to think about, you know, fifth graders being able to be a book buddy, let's say, to second graders or, you know, developing those kind of partnerships with older children to younger children. That can happen both within a special education realm, but also just with any student at any time. So those are the top, off the top of my head kind of thoughts. I don't know if there are specific questions that people might have.
You answered some of mine.
I have a question and it's probably from both you and Mike. I, I share your excitement about everything you said and, but I have a question. So we do have students that come into the district in first grade. So we talk about this longevity piece that's been positive for all these things. But there is a certain segment of the population that will have a very stunted time period in the building. And can you, do you speak to, I mean, you, you two probably know better, you know, if those students that come in at grade one are, are more atypically one way or another, have, have certain characteristics and how that, how this might impact them positively or negatively for having a, this model we're talking about for, for those students that come into the district.
So, you know, in terms of my experience, moving for kids is a challenge, especially when you're moving a community. So you're talking about kids who are experiencing a significant change in their lives if they're coming into Ashland because it's not like they came from another school within Ashland into the new school because of a neighborhood move. So, yes, those present important challenges. I actually think that that would be, you know, an area where Jen Cutler's staff is going to be tremendously helpful because really what that is, is about offering that guidance support and counseling support for students in terms of that overall adjustment to, not only are you entering this new school and you might be here for just the one year, but you're entering a new community and you have to embrace that whole new community and what does that look like? And certainly with that information, as we get to know the uniqueness of that child and of the family circumstance, we can then put forward a good game plan for what makes sense to help that student adjust appropriately. And certainly, you know, thoughts of, you know, having more visits to the next building that they go up to or having opportunity of parent, you know, partnering with another family whose parents might be receptive to, you know, come and, you know, meet us and meet our children and we'll, you know, have play dates and we'll figure this out in terms of having your child feel comfortable and welcome. But I think what you're, you're talking about is certainly something that happens for students who have situations within their families where, you know, they have family moves. And that happens, quite honestly, at every building where students, I mean, you know, we think about kind of, I, I know Mr. Adams and Kelly Sinkor make a strong commitment that if a student moves in 12th grade, they have the ability to make the decision to stay here in Ashland because they feel very strongly that if it's possible to do that, that senior year becomes critically important. And did you really want to make that switch in senior year, which is your last year of public education?
I'm, I'm not always talking about families that move into the district.
Right, they make other choices.
But they might be at a Montessori school, they might be whatever, and they're coming into our district.
I think Mr. Regan has some good information or intel on that.
Thanks, Kathy.
And as Kathy mentioned, you know, the, the piece of the social emotional work and Jen's staff and the counselors is huge for the students that are the move-ins. What's been really exciting for me to see is since the decision to make full-day kindergarten free for all families, we're seeing a great decrease in the number of children that are entering as first graders. We have very few first graders that are coming in because the, the family has looked for a different option, whether it be a full-day Montessori program or something. We still do have families that are looking at the Montessori option and they come back and forth. I think that will continue to be a challenge that we'll face at the Warren School, whatever our configurations are, as families make the decisions that they feel are in the best interest for their child. But the numbers that we had from years ago when Mike was as a principal and when I first arrived, when we still had the half-day program and it was a fee-based for the full-day program, we were seeing a large number of children return as first graders when it was a full-day program. And since that change, those numbers have dropped dramatically.
Thanks, Pete.
Just one technical one. I just, and the transportation impact. Would we be now providing busing to kids that are currently at Pittaway and don't have busing if they're at the Warren School?
As Sarah says, she wishes, but the answer is, the answer is not at this point in time, no.
The only thing that I guess I'd say to think about in terms of logistics on that is you do probably end up with more people driving, right? I mean, if those kids are all coming into the Warren School, right, that's a whole bunch of people that are not on that bus.
Yeah, but the, but the time, it, it might, but the time may have.
So that's, that's part of the, the, the concerns when we put challenges up with regard to even the negotiated contracts, right? And when we start, when we don't start, what does it look like, you know, at the current model that we currently have? You know, current numbers show that we have, if we were to transport, just think the K, the two-through-five, right? So we're adding one grade in. That would put us up to about 730 students based on current numbers that we actually transport. So adding all those students in with the capacity of about 1,300, the buses we do have. But the problem is, and Aaron would tell you, it depends on, you know, where they are, right? So we might have to send two buses, maybe three buses into America, you know, the Americas, Joann Drive. Where, so we have some, next year, we're looking at two buses to certain areas of the community. And just because of the number of kids that are coming out of those, which is inefficient for sure for us, but that's the reality of where our student population is at this point in time.
And, and, and what would even be the age that a bus would be appropriate, right? So I would, I would assume a bus wouldn't even be appropriate for a certain number of our pre-K population.
And, and we do transport some kids because we have.
Right, because those are, you know, but that, that transportation isn't a generic big bus.
Time to get a bus to belt for the preschoolers.
I do think we should maybe consider, though, the, the financial impact for us for our bus fees. So if you have a pre- So, if you have a pre-K through one building, you then potentially have a parent driving two children and one of those children is no longer paying the bus fee. Because if you have to drop, if you're required to drop off your younger child, why would you put the older one on a bus? If you have to pay for it, if you're going to be going all the way.
And how many kids that is, we'd have to look at that for sure. But Warren actually has the fewest amount of students ride the bus in any one of the buildings. What's that, Sarah?
The times right now for Warren and Pittaway are so close that I think those parents that do have siblings are driving full kids to get into the line because we have an eight-thirty start and Warren is eight forty-five or eight fifty start. So, they drop off the bus and when they go get.
That's like really their only option. They couldn't get home in time for the bus.
And then get to the other school in time.
Yeah. Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Pete. Any other questions for anybody on this?
Thank you all for your comments. Very helpful.
Thank you all for being here and for your input and.
And they'll be back on the twenty-sixth.
Excellent.
Again, because it's another conversation. We're, I mean, we're going to continue that dialogue on that day as well with the feedback that hopefully we receive, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, Sarah, you need to get somewhere? Yes.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. That's why I wanted to go first, so.
Yeah.
Uh, then I'll, um, Mike, continue on and then Jen will do her presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Adams, can you just help me find this document here?
Yes, please. And just again, frame of reference as we move, what I wanted Mike to be able to do is come back on a continual basis and provide updates as to the conversations that are occurring within the Mendez Building specifically at this point in time. So, with regard to the multi-age as well as the single age and conversations that are occurring with teaching staff especially right now. So, turn it back over.
Again, thank you for the opportunity to chat with you about this ongoing process. Uh, before I get into the meat of the presentation, I do want to mention that Mrs. Bennett apologizes for not being here today. Know that this entire process has been a complete partnership between she and I. She does have to attend some important family obligations tonight. Um, so, she's sorry that she can't be here, but she does not want her lack of presence to be deemed as anything other than that. She wants to make sure that that's known. That's why. Uh, so, you know, all, all of this stems from a motion that was made by, by the school committee. So, I thought it was important to at least put that out there in place here. Obviously, um, Mr. Kendall did make the motion that we move to unify the Mendez curriculum program. I'm not going to read the entire motion, but this has put in place, um, a series of events at Mendez that I think it's important to update you all on to allow you to understand what we've done to this point and what we plan on doing moving forward. As it's understood by us, this is, this is the sort of meat of our task. Uh, we have been asked to unify the structure and instructional delivery of what is happening at the Mendez Elementary School. You, you want us to incorporate the best practices that are currently in place at Mendez, but also looking at what's happening in education as a whole, not only at, you know, the Mendez Elementary School, but throughout, you know, Massachusetts and ultimately the United States and what are folks doing. But incorporating flexible skill-based grouping was seen as a priority from your group and that we were charged with making that a priority of ours while also incorporating authentic mentoring opportunities. Now, while that particular language wasn't necessarily used, that's language that has been used in all of our meetings at our school. So, I consider that one of our very important tasks to make sure that we're offering mentoring opportunities, but they need to be authentic mentoring opportunities. So, you know, one of the reasons that I think it's important to sort of take you through this process is we're, we're not going to sit here and play Dr. Frankenstein and just start putting things together and, and, and create a monster, right? We've got to create something that's going to be effective and impactful and make sure that we're doing what's best for this community and for these students and for all of our staff members. And we have to do this carefully. Um, so, this has been our process. This charge was given to us, I believe, in, in, in late November and we, we decided to really dedicate the entire month of December to make sure we were talking to our entire staff. This is, we need voices from everyone. We wanted to make sure all voices had the opportunity to be heard. So, what I did is I created this schedule. Um, for those of you who are unaware of what CPT means, those are our Common Planning Time Meetings. So, each day, we have a one-hour meeting scheduled aside for Mrs. Bennett and I to meet with various grade levels or teams. On Mondays, uh, we have the time to meet with our Unified Arts Staff, our specialists. On Tuesday through Friday, we meet with our grades three, four, five, and our multi-grade population of teachers for one hour. We dedicated each of those meeting times to a different topic of conversation that's directly related to this process. In the meantime, we wanted to make sure that everybody who doesn't necessarily have those regular meeting times had the opportunity to speak with us as well. So, I made myself available in the morning as well as the afternoon each of those weeks for staff members to come and sit and give their opinions and meet with me in sort of a casual basis where they would come and talk. And, and those were, you know, voluntary meetings for folks to come and make sure their voices were heard. So, December second, we talked about concerns and fears about the change. It was really important for folks to be able to get that out there. Uh, in, in terms of my view and as a leader, if we're not able to put out all of our fears and concerns, there's no way we're going to be able to move forward. Folks needed to tell us how they were feeling. There were really strong, strong visceral feelings about the potential for this change. And teachers needed to have the opportunity to say that. We had really wonderful conversations about this. We were able to listen. This is how things like authentic mentoring opportunities came to play because folks were mentioning that they don't want to lose that. That was really important to a, to a subset of our population. Week of December ninth, what do we do well? What are the strengths of our current models? You know, we have a lot of different models in place at Mendez. That's one of the reasons we have to unify. But there's a lot of great things that are happening. So, we wanted to make sure that we're talking to teachers about what they really feel passionate about that is going in a, on a successful manner. And then, a collection of ideas of what a new model could look like. So, where, where are we going to go? So, what I attempted to do is sort of, uh, you know, summarize some of these things for our staff in our curriculum meeting, but have them do it together. So, on December nineteenth, we had integrated small group conversations. So, during those three weeks, we were only meeting with specialized teams. So, grade three met separately, grade four met separately, grade five met separately, our multi-grade met separately, and our Unified Arts staff met separately. But on the nineteenth, we integrated all of our staff members into small groups to let them sort of brainstorm together and talk together. So, everybody was able to get the different perspective of everyone else in the building. Uh, and then folks reported back to us about what they talked about, about some of the commonalities that they had. We'll discuss that a little bit more later on. But I felt it was an important part of the process to make sure now everyone was hearing from each other and not just talking within their own little world of, of their team. So, concerns and fears about the change, uh, lots of them, right? Lots of concerns, lots of fears. Change brings out fear. That's, that's what we learn, right? That's what research shows. We understand that. But if you notice some of these fears, they're all things, a lot of things are, are things that we expected to see, right? Scheduling, frequency of how long we'll see students. Our Unified Arts Staff was really concerned about that. They like what they're doing now. They want to know how things are going to change if we move to a new model. The mentoring piece was so important. How can that be maintained? What's going to happen to class sizes? Are we going to see class sizes increase because of this potential change? That authentic and meaningful opportunity for relationship building is important. Are teachers going to be forced to move out of their comfort zone, their current curriculum, and what they learn, what they know to have to learn new material? Uh, these are things that folks brought up on a regular basis. Uh, the special education model, folks were talking about the dual certification model that we currently have in place. They want to know what the future of that is. Will that be impacted? How are we going to deliver our instruction to our special education students? As well as how will instruction look for our English learners? That EL population is so important. So, folks were really starting to think about all of those different, different areas and say, as we move to a new model, it's, it's not just about going from multi-age to single age and single age to multi-age. There's a, a number of different factors that are involved here. So, we were able to get those on the table. And again, for, for every one of these, this is just sort of a, a summary of some of the most commonly spoken about fears and concerns. There, there were others, but these were things that came up regularly and most consistently. In terms of our strengths, I like that I had to make the font a little bit smaller on this one because there, there were, there were more, which was great. Folks, folks felt like, you know, having options is a strength of ours. And, and they're worried about that whole piece of unification. What does unify really mean? Does that mean we all now have to do exactly the same thing? And we're having those ongoing conversations. Some will say, yes, we absolutely need to. Others are sort of saying, options are a strength of ours. Well, I think one of the reasons we're in this predicament right now is because we have all of these different options and we do need to unify and that's what the task was. So.
It's my word if you want, want my definition of it.
So, so, so folks, folks are talking about that in terms of that as a strength, uh, but we're, we're looking to see how we can still provide some sort of opportunity. Teachers have the opportunity to be flexible in their instruction and I think that's important to folks, that there is a flexibility of, of how we're teaching. We did mention that when you, the, the word that was used, and I, and I used our teacher's language, leveled instruction. I think that, that there's not necessarily leveled instruction, but there's instruction that allows the opportunity for students to be grouped based on skill-based learning and that's there. That improves instruction in the classroom because it offers opportunity for our teachers to focus in on a specific subset of students. Flexible groupings are a strength. Some folks are doing that really well and that should be noted and that's something that, that they're really proud of. The whole school schedule right now allows for Common Planning Time. That's something that Mrs. Bennett and I are specifically proud of because we helped to implement that a few years ago. Our teachers were asking for it. They like it. They're glad we have it. They want us to be able to find a way to continue to allow for Common Planning Time within our schedule. They see responsive classroom as a huge strength and they see the consistency in which responsive classroom is being utilized as a huge strength. So, we have to make sure that we're finding time and making sure that that doesn't go away as we move towards a potential new model. You know, again, flexible skills-based grouping, it makes it easier to plan, easier to differentiate for staff. We use a lot of centers-based instruction. We're grouping, we're not, but we're not labeling or tracking and that's really important. And that's, again, part of that flexible model. Uh, and, and teachers are allowed to make their own decisions. We, we allow some freedom for teachers to, to make decisions and teachers see that as a big strength.
Mike, can I just interrupt? So, could you just explain a little bit the different grouping but not labeling? Like, what do you mean? What's, that, that sounds negative.
So, that's that, that's that true flexible, flexible, you know, skill-based grouping. Means students are not being labeled as you are going to forever be in this group. There's the ability for students to move based on specific skill development and that's really one of the charges that we have in this. It's being done in certain areas of our building. So, it was important to point out that that is a current strength that, but it's just not a consistent strength right now. So, yeah, when you, when you start to, when you start to level, that becomes an issue because leveling means students are almost tracked to a certain, never able to bounce into a different group. But when you're grouping and not labeling or tracking, that's a different story for us.
Thanks.
So, ideas of what a new model could look like. Lots of things have been thrown out there. Um, and I thought it was important to show you the many different, uh, some of the many different ideas. So, uh, folks are talking about different teaming models, right? Could we, could we create, and we've sort of been working in the rule of ten, saying that ultimately we'd probably have ten classrooms per grade level. Uh, right now, that's not exactly how things work out based on our, based on our current population, but we have to think about that, right? And, and I, and I had folks using that ten, ten, and ten because that's really what we're thinking about when we're thinking about the, the new building down the road. So, they said, could we have, could we have a model where we have folks working with teams of five and five? So, split up the grade levels. So, we have five teachers teaming together and sort of a red team and five teachers teaming together and a blue team, similar to the model that's used at the middle school, right, where there's two different teams. That's an option that's been thrown out there. The two-two-and-two model was something that was brought up, saying we could now do some multi-age grouping where we had, uh, five teams of six. Uh, so, you have a two-second, two-third grade teachers working with two-fourth grade teachers working with two-fifth grade teachers. And they stay together in that group and the kids follow that path. So, you have some continuity of teachers. What, there's some strengths and weaknesses to that model, as there are to all of them, but these are things that we've discussed. Um, a ten-ten-and-ten model, which would say, we're just going to have ten classrooms and ten grades and how are you going to make sure that that's working together? So, how are those ten teachers now going to work? That's a large team. That, it's, it's similar to the model that happens at Warren. That's what they do. Does that lend itself appropriately to flexible skill-based grouping? We're not sure. We, we at least have to, we at least have to investigate it to see what they could do. Those discussions have been made. Another one is this really interesting sort of model that became organic, uh, in a, during some of these conversations. And it's really hard to explain without seeing a visual representation of it. But it's sort of a, a shared group that would involve maybe seven or eight teams in a vertical sharing with a total of two groups of fifteen. So, if you can sort of bear with me for a moment, you would have, uh, a group of fifteen and a group of fifteen and you would have potentially within that fifteen, five, five, and five. So, you would have five third grades, five fourth grades, five fifth grades, but seven would work together vertically and eight would work together vertically. But then those two groups could work together combined horizontally. So, you would have those five teachers working together.
I have no idea what you're saying.
Again, really confusing, really confusing without, without a visual model. You know, obviously, I'm not practicing what I preach with my staff, always pairing a visual with, with the verbal. But there is a visual model that we've done of this, which would allow for some real teaming and it would allow for a lot of multi-age grouping as well as horizontal grouping. And it's something that I think, again, we need to investigate further to see if it would be logistically possible and how we'd be able to incorporate it. Because it sort of incorporates a lot of the different other models that folks have talked about.
Mike, on that, just because I think a lot of us are confused about that sort of model. Can I go through like a, an example and you tell me if it's right?
Sure.
So, there's fifteen teachers, five in each grade.
Yeah.
So, of the five, potentially the third-grade kids would move in there for the non-ELA and math, but then for ELA and math, they could potentially move vertically because it'd be more skill level-based?
Yes, I, I think, I think you're sort of following it, but we haven't even gotten into that sort of depth of what it would be for different subjects. It would essentially be, so, five teachers clumped in, in the same grade level. So, five third-grade teachers would work together horizontally, so, all for horizontal planning. So, anytime we got together, they would be working together to make sure that anything, that whatever, whatever we chose to be purely grade-level-based, they were with one another. But there would be a component where maybe two fifth grades of the five could potentially work with three fourth-grade teachers and maybe two fifth-grade teachers if there was some multi-grade mixing going on, perhaps for different areas, different curriculum areas maybe or other opportunities throughout the day. Now, they would work together vertically to, to, to work together with those people, but they would also work with that component. And those students would stay together for three years, but they could mix, intermingle between A and B and always, you know, sort of meet the same number of staff members. So, it hit a lot of different things specifically that some of our, our, um, multi-grade teachers like the idea of where you'd get to know certain kids, kids would develop relationships over three years. You could shrink a large school and make it a little bit smaller. Again, challenges. Now, you still have, oh, well, we want this team. We don't want this team. How do you form the teams? Always going to have those challenges. How do you make it work? When, where do you incorporate that multi-age grouping? How do you incorporate it? So, again, just another model of exploration, but I think you're on the right track, Erin, where you would think about, okay, where, where could you fit it? Would it be, you know, horizontal groupings for ELA and math, vertical groupings for something else potentially? So, that, that's there. Uh, other things, a collection of ideas, skill-based for math and ELA, um, and maybe eliminating the dual model. That, that's been put out there as our staff. Our staff is talking about the elimination of that and, and, you know, work with special education students in a different way. Um, content-based switching. Perhaps we move to a model that's similar to some of the things that middle school does. Obviously, teachers who see that, some of them say, we're not a middle school. We're an elementary school. We don't want to do content-based switching. But again, things that we explore, and I put all these things up there, so, so you folks know that we are looking at every little possibility to make sure we're doing what's best for our kids. This is very important. We are not taking this responsibility lightly. Uh, mixed lunches, mixed recesses. That's a good opportunity for us to create some multi-grade opportunities. Um, right now, we have lunches and, and recess only in grade levels. Are those places where we could incorporate multi-age opportunities for kids? Could we incorporate something like a multi-age discovery or advisory block, similar to what the middle school does? They have an, uh, a multi-age, they have a discovery block and an advisory block. Could we find time in our schedule to create meaningful mentoring opportunities with that? Where students would stay together for three years with a, with a teacher and have new students arrive each year and, and, and build in that model. Um, one of our teachers brought up something that has happened in the past, which was called Mosaic. Which was something that they explained to me happened years before I arrived at, at Mendez, where it was, um, uh, once a week for six weeks, and it happened over a cycle where kids went to sort of a, uh, I think Mr. Adams used to call it like the X-block or something at the high school, where, where teachers were teaching something they wanted to explore with kids. And it became an opportunity for enrichment, and it only happened one time a week, but kids got to choose. And that was another way to incorporate some multi-age opportunities for our building. Again, team teaching has been brought up significantly. There's many folks who really want to make sure we're incorporating teaming in some way. And, uh, maybe just offering opportunities for multi-age groupings during project-based learning. Having specific projects throughout the year that we're incorporating on a monthly basis perhaps. Where we are now saying, this is when we're going to mix kids in a multi-grade way. So during that curriculum meeting, uh, these are the questions we asked, um, for the integrated small groups to talk about. We wanted folks to look at, what are some of the commonalities? What are our roadblocks? How can we compromise with one another to meet the needs and hopes of our teachers while also meeting the expectations of our school committee and staying true to our students than centered mentality? This is what we wanted to talk about. So teachers, you know, came up with different scenarios and talked about their, their, their own thoughts. And, and that's sort of how we base these conversations. And that also led to them discussing the different models that we just shared with you. Um, so really important for you to know that we're, we're taking this seriously. We are taking our time. I, I want to go back to that piece that I talked about in the beginning. We're not just throwing something together here. The, we, we don't want to create something that is not going to be successful in the long term. We need to get buying. We need to make sure that our teachers are excited about this, and we're trying to build that excitement by making sure all voices are heard and everybody is involved. And I will tell you that we have had some tremendous conversations where folks that have had a lot of fears, have left, I think, the meeting feeling a lot better than they were initially feeling. I think there's still a lot of fear. I think there's still a lot of anxiety. I'd be lying if I, I didn't say that. But the, the, there are folks who are now seeing that we are really being very serious and diligent about trying to make sure we're incorporating that mentoring piece. Uh, what happens next? We've got incoming third graders coming, and everybody is worried about them. What are we going to do for them? So we have to start thinking very seriously about our incoming third graders. Um, I think it's pretty clear that whatever we're going to do is probably not going to be in place for the, the next school year. I, I, I don't want to say that with utmost certainty, but if we're going to do this right, this is going to need to take some time. So we've got to come up with sort of that in-between time plan. And we're starting to have those convers- we've not just started, we've had, we've had those conversations, and we've been having those conversations of what we need to do. And, and more than just the incoming third graders, wh- what happens to our current third and fourth graders? Specifically those students who are in the multi-grade population. Um, we have got to make sure that they're not missing out on being with a large number of students throughout the day. We can't, we can't allow for that population to just shrink and not be prepared for it. So we've got to now come up with a plan of what we're going to do to bridge this gap that we're more than likely going to be creating. Um, I, I think that what we need to do now is have conversations with staff that are solely centered on that. What is going to happen? We need to have a real good conversation with our multi-grade teaching population, and that's the next step here. Um, because I personally concerned about when this change takes place and how does it impact us in September? What does it look like? Uh, so we, we need to, we need to come up with a plan, and I think that our multi-grade teachers need to help drive that plan. Um, what is, what is it going to look like for our incoming third graders? And I would ask that maybe that's what I, I speak to you about the next time that I come to present. We're going to continue, obviously, with the work of what we're going to be doing in the future. Uh, because what we want to do is, um, come up with some exploration of these various ideas and, and take a look at them logistically. Uh, Mrs. Bennett and I need to sit down and kind of look at all these different options that we've been provided with from our staff. And, and sort of look at it logistically, because each time, people have got caught up in the details. And that's really important sometimes to, 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 to dig down. I mean, I, I tend to be that, you know, big picture thinker. But there's many things that are impacted, and, and scheduling is a major component of that. How do we logistically pull off some of these things? So I, I think it'd be great if Mrs. Bennett and I were allowed the opportunity to sort of pick a couple of what we think are might be the favorites of our staff. And present to them what is, what a potential schedule would look like. And then maybe dig a little bit deeper, present those options to staff. And we then want to sort of shrink the number of voices to a certain extent. We always want to make sure that we're having everybody's input. But if we can shrink the amount of people that are in the meeting, then that helps. So we want to create a working group among our teaching staff, where we have a representative from all the different areas that are coming. And meeting with their own teams regularly, but then coming and sitting down and having a, a smaller conversation, um, with Mrs. Bennett and I. And then I, I, I do think it's important to, you know, eventually bring the public in as well. We want to be able to get opinions of folks. But it was very important to us that we started this process with our teachers. They're the ones that are going to be living it every day, and we really wanted to make sure that we're focusing on our staff first. Which is why we've tried to keep this very much in-house to begin. I do eventually think there's gonna need to be some input from, from other individuals and other stakeholders. But right now, we're still focusing mainly on our teaching staff and, and what their needs and thoughts are. Um, so hopefully I was able to add a little insight into what we've been doing. Um, know that I'm certainly not making any excuses, um, but another one of the reasons we're moving slow is because there's other, there's other initiatives that are happening at, at Mendez right now, that are happening pre-K, uh, happening K to five specifically in the area of literacy. So we have to make sure that we're still giving enough time to our teachers to prepare for this major move that we're making curriculum-wise in terms of our literacy instruction and literacy methodology. So that, that has also taken some of our time, and that's really important, because we can't lose sight of the importance of this move. Um, that, you know, the, the way that we're going to be adopting a new model for literacy instruction is going to really assist us in all areas. But we've got to make sure that we're finding time for both. So happy to answer any questions you might have, but you're probably sick of hearing my voice up here too.
Questions?
I'll just offer one comment, which is, you know, really, really pleased that the vast majority of the issues that are being discussed are being discussed in terms of what's best for the kids. And I appreciate the fact that, that staff members obviously have legitimate concerns about how their world changes. But it, but they seem, from what you presented, to have been able to engage in the process with a lens towards what's right for kids. Rather than what's right for me first, and I'm pleased to hear that.
It's certainly a strength of our staff that I'm proud of, and, and it was, it was great to be able to look at that and see that as well. So thank you for noticing that, Mark. Appreciate it.
I was just gonna say, I'm really encouraged by this and, um, just all the different ideas you put out here, the ideas of what a new model could look like. So I'm really, I'm excited. It shows, it's, it sounds like there's a lot of collaboration going on. A lot of ideas are being listened to. And a, um, a lot of things that I think that, you know, people were concerned about, so I'm encouraged by this. I, I think you're doing the right thing. You're taking the right amount of time. Um, I don't think we were looking for an answer right now, so I think this is terrific.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, so, uh, just to address two of the things you said, give my, my two cents on it. Uh, one, it was my word in the motion to, to unify, and I'll, I'll clarify at least what I meant by it. Um, currently, we have, you know, several different models, each with their own toolbox. And a decision I make as a parent might limit the ability to access a tool that's in a different toolbox, right? Um, so when I say unify, everybody dip it in the same toolbox. You can still have variety. You can still have, you know, the right mixture of tools for each child. But it's, it, it's similar if we had, you know, we're talking about ice cream. I have Ben and Jerry's here. I have Friendly's over here, and I have Haagen-Dazs over here. And I'm like, well, I'm in Betty Jerry's right now, but I really like that flavor over there. We can't do that, right? But if we're all in the same, uh, in the same building, we can, we can all say, hey, we need this new flavor. And it's a flavor now everybody can access. Uh, so that's what I meant by unify. It wasn't to say that every kid gets the exact same instruction, you know, with some rigid thing. It's, it's more making sure that everyone has equitable access to all the same tools. And that we can differentiate the education and, and experience for each child. And everybody has access to that regardless of any decision. You're not pigeonholed or limited by a, a decision you made two, three years ago. So that's what I meant by, by unify.
Is it okay if we have Brigham's?
No.
Did someone say that in Jerry's?
Um, so, so the other thing was, uh, on timeline, um, you know, I would certainly have never expected an impact, something to impact this incoming school year. So I actually think that your top priority now is what are we doing to sustain our current programming? In mean, in a meaningful way that, that we can sustain it. Because while we don't have a ti- we didn't set a timeframe for you to implement, we certainly have a timeframe at, you know, by, you know, fall of twenty twenty-three. This needs to be in place, even if that's when we switch over, but that is, that is the drop dead. I, I probably wouldn't even be able to support something if you said, hey, I got it, and we're doing it, uh, in September this year. I think that's, that's crazy. So I would actually, my two cents is that's the top priority, because you do have some time to get it right. But we don't have time to drag our feet to make sure we can sustain and not, as you said, impact not only those, those incoming students. But the students, and mine's one of them, that are already in the multi-age program. And that we're not taking something that quite frankly was one of the negatives is, you know, a student in there. You know, my, I have, I have a, you know, fourth grade boy, and the number of other fourth grade boys he interacts with is very limited.
Sure.
And I certainly don't want to exacerbate that, uh, by having something dwindle, right? So if, if the incoming class was even smaller, that we're taking something that was potentially negative and exacerbating. And so I personally think that's, that's a, that trumps even the, you know, development of the program. We need to figure out how we sustain currently. So those are just a few things. Uh, but I, I also want to echo what, what they said. I, I love what you, what you presented. I, I love that everything is being thrown out there. Um, you know, that, that's, that's exciting, and it, and it's exciting to see what, what they're gonna come up with. Because we do have a lot of awesome educators in, in the building, so that's pretty cool.
So I have one question, but actually a question for you. Were you saying fall twenty twenty-three because that's doors open on the new building?
Right.
Or renovated.
We, we, we. Well, a new renovated building, whatever. So, so that's our opening, so we are not going to, uh, you know, go into that building with the model we're currently in. So it needs to sustain for whatever period we need to transition, but that's our, we don't, we don't have a, you must get it done earlier. But that's, that's our, that's our end time. That's why I said that, yes.
Okay. Um, so Mike, one of my questions, you had answered earlier of like, the more resistant, anxious, concerned staff that may have been really upset at the beginning of this year, hearing that they're starting to have some of their fears answered. And, and really starting to participate in this process, so that's really good for me to hear. One model that I didn't see, but maybe it's part of what you're considering, is like if, okay, if you have two, three fat in the same building, doing a two-three and a four-five.
So, so yeah, and, and thank you for bringing that up, because I did say I was gonna touch, potentially touch upon that, uh, in. With every one of our conversations, our teachers have brought that possibility up. They continually say, Mike, what if second grade is coming to us? Um, so it's yet another reason that we have to make sure that we're pressing the pause button to a certain extent. You folks are going to be making a very important decision, uh, at the end of February in terms of what that model is going to look like. What that model is going to look like down the road will certainly impact, you know, what we decide to look like, but there's lots of different options. So many of the, many of the options that have been discussed and presented tonight as, as possibilities could easily implement second grade. Uh, we could do that two-three clump and that four-five clump. We could do that. We could incorporate some of those models that I had on the board with, you know, second grade being added. We need to take into consideration whether or not the second grade teachers, um, would feel strongly about second graders having a, you know, single graded model like they have right now, where they are in a self-contained classroom. That's an important thing to consider. Are students in second grade ready for that type of movement or teaming? Or sh- or is, are they better off with a self-contained model? So those are questions that we need to have. Um, and I think that once we get there, we need to make sure that Mr. Regan and I are spending time speaking with the second grade team. And I have not had the opportunity to do that yet. Um, thankfully, I, I know some of them very well, but I, I want to go down and I want to get their opinions. I, I want to talk to them. I want to hear their voice. And, um, we'd be doing our entire district an injustice if we weren't doing that. So, um, that's, that's something that would be, you know, the next step. I didn't really want to put the cart before the horse. Um, if that's not where we're going, I, I'm not sure if that's a conversation that we need to have.
Right, not yet. Yeah. Um, my question, Mike, oh, I'm so sorry. Go ahead. No, 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 ask as many as you need to.
Um, so one of the options that you said is, um, multi-age recess time and lunchtime. And I would just like to put it out there, I completely disagree with that. I actually think that those times when the kids can be social is better time to be graded and age level. Um, just my experience of like what a third grade, how a third grader is treated sometimes by a fifth grader. You know, they tend to, well, we're the big cool kids and exclude. Or the fifth graders get their sex ed class, and they're in a class or sharing words, language with third graders, potentially now even second graders. So I'm on the opposite feeling of that. My final statement, which i- I think it's gonna actually be not very popular. Um, I think we have started the ball rolling, and we're gonna be dealing with a self-fulfilling prophecy. I think much of the communication around the neighborhood from this fall and the feeling of the meetings is neighborhood's going away. And so when we talk about incoming third graders, at least what I'm hearing in the community is even from parents who were dedicated neighborhood parents are not considering neighborhood anymore. I think we are going to end up with extremely low numbers in the lottery that you won't even need to have. And then we're gonna have to scramble. So I think we need to be having a contingency plan for some implementation of this fall.
So I, I may not have been clear. That, that, that's what we're doing now. We, we all, we, we share those concerns. So we are all very concerned about that.
Okay, because I had heard nothing for twenty twenty-one school year. Okay.
So this, yeah, so, a- again, I, I apologize if I lacked clarity.
No.
Um, I'm concerned about when this change takes place and how does it impact us in September, this September, this coming September. I'm concerned about that of what's going to happen specifically to our incoming third graders. So we need to come up with a plan to help that. So what is that going to look like? Is it going to look like offering something completely different than we have right now to bridge the gap? I, I don't know. That's up, that's up to our teaching staff to talk about. And I particularly want to bring in our multi-grade teachers to get their opinions on how we're going to make it work. I agree. I, I, I think there is, well, there hasn't been a need for a lottery in, I think, two or three years, but I think that is going to be even less now.
I think the two places out of the two.
And, and I, and I think that what we need to do is be ready for that, because it's going to impact our current third and fourth graders immensely as well. So if we do not have a student population that is going in there, we have now shrunk the population for those students to have more socialization. We've got to figure out what we're going to do for those kids. So we are, we are absolutely on the same page, uh, Ms. Williams, and we're, and we're gonna make sure that we do everything to, to make. to, to make sure that, you know, things are moving in the right direction for those new kids.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we, what we potentially could do, but it would take an extremely concerted effort is if we say we're not making a program change until there's a new building, that we go back to the community and like we're talking massive communication effort. Um, video, like your videos that you host online, like your web chats and stuff of the neighborhood as alive and well until we're at the new school and.
I, I don't know how that helps. It just kicks the can. So if, if twenty twenty-three we're opening, we're switching then, who's going to sign up in twenty twenty-two? It's the same, you're just kicking, you're just saying, you know, whatever they think is happening now, they, it's going to, if they think it's going to happen the year or two before that.
Yeah, it would probably.
Right, so.
Say this year's class.
We need to figure out what we're doing with that trend, you know, that, that, that succession plan, that sustainability. How do we sustain what we have in, in a meaningful way?
And, and I would, I would ask for some time, like I did last time, to, to, to talk with staff and to present to you a potential plan for how we're going to help bridge the gap.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things that we all have to remember in terms of the timing issue, um, and I certainly hear you saying this, Mike, but, you know, Jim, you said to us when, when you were looking at this recommendation that this would be something you would be recommending because of the equity issues involved. That really, the, the school building project is coming down the pipe and it just happens to be running on its, on a similar course. But at the, at the end of the day, what we really are looking at here is implementing more equitable programming and aiming towards that. And as soon as we can figure out how to do that in a way that's supportive of all of our kids, we should be looking to move forward with that. If it's not going to be viable for next September, um, in full, then, you know, understood. Um, but I, I don't, the idea of, of sort of pushing it out, I agree with Paul's point, it's, it's going to be a problem just for a different individual setup of kids. But, and families, but I think.
We were addressing a different issue when we made this decision.
It would be like, say, well, we're just going to continue the equities for a longer period of time.
So from that lens, the sooner it's better.
And, and our, and our goal is to implement this new plan as soon as we're ready to implement this new plan.
Right, but not sooner than you're ready. And I hear you.
I think it makes sense to start afresh in September of a school year. But we're certainly not going to rush to make it happen next school year.
Right.
But I do not think it's necessarily appropriate to wait until September of twenty twenty-three to implement a new plan if we are prepared and ready to go. Um, so, thanks.
Right. That would feel like too long to me based on what we were trying to, you know, then you lose two or three years of, uh, fixing what we were trying to address.
Absolutely.
Uh, but certainly not, uh, rushing. It raises other issues and whatever we do, we want to make sure that's the right thing to do. And so my question is more process, Mike, like, um, it, it's fabulous what you've done so far, like taking the input from everybody, giving the opportunity for people to address their fears, give input. Sounds like you've starting to develop a list of the different ideas. But narrowing it down to, you know, one or maybe two recommendations. Um, do you foresee continuing these discussions with your entire building? Or do you think that you could, you're thinking about a smaller work group at some point?
Yeah, so, so that was nothing, we, we would, we would like to sort of shrink that amount of voice that we're getting in terms of having a working group. But obviously, the, the task of the working group members would be to serve as a liaison to their specific team.
Right.
So we'll invite a member of this third grade team to be with us in a small working group, a fourth grade team, a fifth grade team. Make sure special education, unified arts, uh, service providers are all having their voices heard. Our ESPs need to be included in the process.
Yeah.
So we would have probably a group of, you know, ten to twelve, so, but it'd be much smaller than having these massive, uh, conversations with everybody all at once. And I, and I do think still we'll be utilizing our CPT time to discuss these things. But it'll be more about reporting what's been talked about in the small group.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I, I think that doing it like that will help us be able to hone in on where we need to be. Um, and, and, you know, our goal right now is to take the best of all these different ideas and to try and come up with different options. And, you know, there's one that, that confusing one that I, that I presented to you. That, that's been talked about in a couple of different groups. And each time we've talked about it in the group, things have grown from that idea. And there has been a level of excitement with that one because it seems like it truly incorporates a lot of people's different ideas. So we just have to figure out, you know, some logistics there. And I think we also have to show them other options too.
Right.
You can do these things. So, yeah, that's, that's really where we are right now is here's one, here's, maybe, maybe three is our max.
Right.
But we want to be able to, to, to have those smaller conversations and then we report out.
Right. And I think, um, I appreciate the sort of, um, just narrowing down of the idea of authentic mentoring opportunities. I think we talked about a little bit here, but it didn't necessarily show up on the motion. But, um, you know, to Erin's point, I'm sure everybody agrees, like sticking all, a variety of age groups in recess is not necessarily mentoring. I mean, you might get some idea of how other age groups behave, but not the same kind of, you know, structured with a purpose kind of mentoring that. So it would be, you know, great if we find some other opportunities. Uh, and I'm not saying I'm against, I mean, I don't have kids that age anymore. So I, I, I don't have any input on whether it's working or not working to have them in the specials together. But, um, but I, I, I will share that I don't know if that's mentoring. You know, I'm thinking just probably like you are, that mentoring is a, is another level. Yeah.
And I just want to follow up a question, Lori, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, Mike, one of the things that, you know, in the original motion that talked about is not just best practices at Mendez, but best practices in education. And I'm curious as to, um, whether anybody is looking at other models that are done in other school districts um, and bringing those in. Are these reflective of some of those thoughts or is that something still to be done?
Yeah, they are. And it's interesting too, because that, that happens kind of organically as well. It's, you know, when you have a, a, a group of teaching staff, a lot of times what happens is they say, well, you know, my child's school doesn't like this.
Yeah.
And, and we also have other colleagues that we've spoken to and I've reached out to some, some principal, you know, colleagues and whatnot, talking about what's working well at your school. But I have found some of the, the best conversations have been when our teachers say, you know, at, at my kid's school, this is what they've done. And then a conversation happens. So we are hearing about things that happen. But I also think it's important that we kind of expand that search a little bit too. Um, so we, we, we do need to make sure we're incorporating that a little bit more.
Yeah, or even when we were, um, collecting information about during the decision-making period, um, someone had thrown out to me Newton, a couple of elementary schools in Newton because they appeared high on a list, on a list. Um, and so I did contact, um, yeah, they're on a list. Um, as one of the top like schools in America, whoever's evaluating that, I'm not really sure. But anyhow, I did follow up because I wanted to understand from Newton, um, what that meant to them. And I, I followed up the school committee there. And, um, they really couldn't point to anything that they were doing. You know, it was more just probably, you know, in that neighborhood where the school was, maybe there was a larger group of, yeah, it's an affluent area and there's focus on education. I'm not really sure if I could tell you what it is, but what it isn't was any kind of structured programming or anything different than, um, what we would call traditional here. Um, and they were just getting different results.
And, you know.
Yeah.
One of the things too that we always hear about is the importance of, uh, the methodology of instruction. But also, you know, how are you utilizing resources and, and what are you doing? The fact that we are about to implement the Lucy Cockens workshop model for our literacy instruction, that is something that other districts who are succeeding are doing.
Right.
So that alone is one of those best practices that we're now going to incorporate and our teachers are excited about that.
And we're already doing it, yeah.
It has nothing to do with this change, but it's something that's happening. So that, that in itself is going to improve our instruction.
Results, yeah.
Yeah, and responsive classrooms. It's the same thing. So some of these things that we've added over the course of, you know, the past couple of years and we'll be adding within the next year or so, tho- those are going to sort of organically help us as well.
Excellent. Thank you. It sounds like you guys are doing some excellent work over there. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks for having me. It's great.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, I'm going to duck out and go be a parent.
Go be a parent.
I appreciate everybody moving or meeting up to an hour earlier so I could hear, uh, all this stuff.
Yeah, glad you got to hear it. Go do.
I have to be a parent at seven.
No, can I be a parent at seven? I want.
Parenting begins at seven for everybody.
Well, we've got two things left. That's what we have left. We have twins. Jen Cutler's first.
Okay.
And, you know.
My apologies, Jen.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jen. I was just going to close this down.
Don't worry, Jen. He doesn't care about social emotional.
I'd like the record to reflect an objection to Mr. Kendall's.
Yeah. He is in fact going to spend time with his son, so.
This is true.
I definitely agree with that.
Yes. I knew you would.
There you go.
I'm just glad not to be on the receiving end for one.
What's that?
I'm just glad to not be on the receiving end for one.
It, it only goes to my rights.
Oh, so if I just sit over here? If I demote myself like one year of service, I can.
Don't say. I, I can spell you in. Um, hi.
Jen.
So I'm here to talk a little bit, um, about the mental health supports, um, that we have in the schools currently and, um, sort of a proposal that I have, um, for our partnership to offer our students even more. So I just want to start with, this came out of, um, meeting with all the counseling staff. Um, you know, sort of from when I got here in October through the spring. Um, and it became very clear, we have a really passionate group, you know, beginning, you know, at Warren through the high school of counselors who really want to provide everything that they can for our students. And the area that they felt, and I agree, um, with, was lacking is that wraparound mental health piece. Um, we have, and for those of you that were at, um, uh, Karen Spilker's event last week, she talked, the presenters talked a lot about this. And I was actually excited to hear it because I was like, oh, good. We're trying to form a partnership to help with this. Um, there's a lot of barriers to mental health treatment for families, you know, across the nation. Um, and, you know, Massachusetts actually happens to be very high on the list of, um, not, you know, of having more available providers. Um, and more access to mental health treatment than, than a lot of the states. But still, there's about fifty-four, fifty-three, fifty-four percent, um, of youth that aren't accessing mental health treatment, um, uh, outside of the school day. Um, and a lot of this is, you know, due to, um, sort of those really long wait lists. And this is what we're seeing, this is what the counselors here have been seeing, this is what districts across the state and nation are seeing. Where, you know, we have those students who are receiving, um, our counseling interventions throughout the school day, but they really need more, um, in order to be able to make, you know, social, emotional progress. Um, and their families need more and they want more. Um, and this is that population that we're talking about. I'm going to say this is probably like one to two percent. But it's a very important one to two percent that our staff and our administrators spend a great deal of the day helping and supporting. Um, and so, uh, after seeing that in action, being in the schools last year and talking to the counselors, um, it's something that I really wanted to try to see, could I form a partnership with any, um, local, uh, counseling agencies so that they would, um, be able to provide services within the school day? Um, that's happens to be the time that, um, parents don't typically, aren't typically able to leave work. They don't want to take their child out of school. Um, they can't. Um, and that's when, um, counselors are more available because no one takes those slots. So those nighttime, um, and, you know, after school and weekend spots, if those are available, um, are filled up really quickly. And so then you might see a kid who has emerging mental health issues, if we're talking at the Warren School, um, and even pre-K level. Um, and then, you know, has actually been diagnosed, they're not receiving treatment. They might be waiting for twelve, eighteen months. I've seen kids just wait for a really long time. And then sometimes even when there is an opening, again, it's not, it doesn't work for whatever reason. Um, so, um, I had reached out, I met with Wayside in Framingham. I reached out to Advocates, um, in Framingham and a couple of other places, uh, last spring. And, um, had, you know, Wayside was very willing to work with us, but they wanted, um, the district to pay salary, um, pay half the salary. And, um, that was not something that I thought actually needed to happen to make this be an effective partnership. Um, and then Advocates, right before, um, uh, Christmas actually reached out to me and said, oh, you know, we would, we're, we've been talking about this and we would really love to start this partnership. Um, and really all their, they're not looking for us to pay any part of salary. Um, they would be billing through insurance. Um, and they accept most private insurances and mass health. So I think that really opens it up to a lot, you know, to our smaller population that makes a, that we, we know really needs this support. Um, this, this opens up a nice opportunity for them. Um, so what we would provide is really a space. Um, and I think, and I've spoken to all the administrators and, and Mr. Adams about this. And I think that we would be able to make a space available, um, in each school, um, for students who, who really need this support during the school day. Um, uh, obviously a time, I've talked to all the different levels about, you know, it might look very different at the high school where, you know, we might not, you know, we might have students see, um, clinicians towards the end of the day, um, or during a study. Um, I talked last year with, um, Mrs. St. Kerr and Mrs. Shields about even doing sort of like that last period and maybe even into the afternoon, a little bit after school ends. Um, and, um, so I think there's a lot of possibilities. Whereas if you're talking about like Warren or Mendez, those students that we would be referring for this service um, are having difficulty accessing their education during the day. So this would actually probably be a very nice service to put in for them, um, you know, during the school day. Um, and then we would be providing the referrals, which sort of, um, would be our next step, really figuring out. I, I think that I've worked in a district where we did this and we really refined our process. Um, uh, and I think having a very specific referral process of, of who we in the district, who, of who our counseling staff and administrators are referring to this service, we, that, that'll be a really important piece of this. Um, and, uh, and then obviously we would have a memorandum of understanding, um, with the, with the counseling agency. So, questions, thoughts?
Sounds amazing.
Yeah.
So excellent work. I think that's great. Um, I know it's hard, right, to even find therapists that have time in their schedule.
Right.
And then there's the issue of cost and all of that. Are, are there any students who are uninsured, you know, that, and, and would there be a way for them to?
I mean, I think that the majority of our students, um.
Yeah, I know by law, there's, everyone's supposed to have it, but.
Do, we have, see, the, our partnership with Human Services in the town.
Yeah.
Um, is great. And so, so Jennifer Wolfing is able to walk, bring parents in and help them sign up for mass health.
Okay.
Um, and find out exactly what, I think that process is very daunting to anyone.
Yeah.
And, um, she's really able to, she, she will, I, one of our counselors or myself will call Jen. She'll make an appointment with a parent, will let the parent know, they'll go over and she basically does the process for them with them there.
Excellent. So there's no student that would fall through the cracks because of that?
I mean, I think that if there was an issue with that, then we would do as much support as we can to have them get insurance so that they could.
Excellent. I have a question. So I'm just, so one of my questions I'd written down. So who, who initiates the request? And could the student or the family say, we think they need counseling and they, we can't get an appointment out of school? So is, is that some, is that a scenario? Or is it, or is it, um, our guidance and counseling staff that's going to be making the referral?
So my, I, I haven't fully had this conversation with the counseling staff yet. I wanted to sort of present it to you first before we moved to that. But my thought on that is that I really think it should come from our staff. Um, certainly if, uh, if a parent came and said that, I, I really think that child would already be on our radar. Um, and if they weren't, then I'd want to look into more, you know, maybe supporting them to see if we can help them find, um, counseling outside of the school setting. I think it really should be those students who, um, you know, we as a, a counseling team really feel this child is in crisis, this child really needs this.
Right.
Um, you know, not necessarily, my child is, you know, showing a lot of, um, difficulty outside of school. Um, you're not seeing it in school, but I think we can certainly help them.
Yeah.
And we would.
So no, it's, so it's, it sounds like it's more of a support for our.
Internally.
Internally.
And you guys know too how to prioritize, you know, if you only have the therapist a certain amount of hours a week, you're going to have to make some decisions about.
Right.
Who gets to use that time.
Right.
So having outside influence on that is probably not going to help that process.
Absolutely, yeah, right.
So, so actually, just two questions. One of them, you know, uh, what, what type of capacity are we talking about? You know, as it relates to that? And also, you know, is there, is this, does this partnership assist? And if we're only talking, you know, strictly right now about, you know, during school hours in a school setting, but they're struggling externally to, to get those resources, does this partnership help with? Does this partnership help with getting them that help outside of the school setting as well? And then potentially, you know, you know, for the times they don't necessarily need it during school, that, you know, kind of shifting it to, you know, where they might have been struggling before to get the, the appropriate supports externally? Is, is there, does this help that as well?
So, yes, so, so my thought is that what we can't provide in the schools is we can't provide evening, weekend, school vacation, summer counseling support for the family and the child. And I think that providing this wraparound makes that, the ability for that to happen. And I know that when we did this in my last district, that was a big piece that I felt like, if we're going to bring someone in and have them do counseling, mental health counseling during the school day, I want to make sure that that mimics what mental health counseling looks like outside of the school. So they're available to make that continu, make that continuous service. Because we know if we're putting it to that level, that doesn't stop for a Christmas vacation or over the summer. So I think that my goal would be that. And I haven't completely, I have thought through some scenarios where maybe some of our school space would be available during the summer if that was more convenient to resident, you know, but that would be something to have further discussion on. And Paul, I forgot what your first question was.
Just, just, you know, the type, type of capacity we're talking about, you know, is it an hour or two a day in each building? You know, I, I, I don't know if you've even gotten that far with them as far as understanding what, you know, or would it be dynamic based on our need or, you know?
So right now, they have two clinicians that are, are very on board and very interested in, in doing this. And so we talked about, first, we need to identify what our current need is and start that referral process. And, but they could, you know, they told me that right now, if we wanted to start, you know, in a month, they, those two clinicians could be in our district, you know, one or two days a week. So I think it really, I don't see that necessarily taking that much time. I see maybe we'll start out with one and have half a day someplace, half a day someplace else. But I really see that based on what our need, they're not going to, you know, they wouldn't stay in the building if they didn't have a student.
Right, sit around with no clients, yeah.
Right.
And I guess the, the third one, but I'm assuming, you know, you've probably already thought of or, I don't know if this partnership is, is something that they've done, you know, with other districts? And how does, is that, as they're providing these services in our walls and, you know, they're still covered under their liability and everything like that? Or, you know, just making sure that, I'm assuming you've worked all that out and there's no, nothing?
Yeah, there's just something they've done in many districts.
Right.
And they probably carry their own insurance, right?
Yes, yes. Yep.
In essence, we, I mean, our, our exposure, our risk is just providing space for that opportunity. Parents can deny, I mean, we can, we can identify the counseling staff.
Right.
But the parents can say, no, I'm not going to take you up on that offer.
Right.
So. So all we're looking for is just a, you know, motion to allow us to enter into an agreement with Advocates. And so Jen can move forward with having those conversations.
And is that something that you're, you're?
I would sign, yeah.
Yeah, so now you can do it.
Yep.
And then if at any time you're not happy with it, you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we can back on anything we want.
Yep.
Just got the motion.
I'll move because I didn't get to say, like, I'm in that one to two percent and this would be amazing. Like, I just think it's so awesome. And I also, two of the directors over at Advocates are like my big brother and sister, I've known them my entire life. And so, and like, I just know what wonderful people they are and their colleagues. And just as this, my only, I guess, concern, I'm so sorry, I'm making this a long motion.
This isn't part of the motion.
No, it's not. So when we think about counseling services in school, a lot of it is trying to work through the moment to get them back into the classroom.
Correct.
Whereas a lot of these kids need to go deep, especially kids with a trauma background. Like, my kid doesn't have a trauma background, but he needs to, he needs that hour to talk through everything that's in his busy little mind before he can go back to the classroom. So my only thought was for, you had talked about the Warren Mendez being during the school day? And is it more or less disruptive if they're going really deep on topics? To do it during the school day versus right after the school day?
Right, so I think there's, I, I think it really depends. I would probab, I'm going to say that ninety-five percent, I would not recommend a child who has, who's going, who's going into counseling for trauma, take, take, be referred for this. Because I think, I, I absolutely wouldn't want, you know, that specific. Now, if you have a child who has anxiety, or you have a child who, you know, a, a lot of our counselors in the school setting do end up going a little deeper anyway. And I think that, you know, certainly depending sort of on the student and what their, you know, referring, referring problem is, that's where we would determine sort of what time of day would be best for that student? What are they working on? What does the clinician think? What do the counselors who would be working with the student think that would work best for them? But I don't think, you know, in my opinion, that trauma is not something that, you know, I, and I really think that, you know, kids with trauma really need to be treated with a trauma-based approach, which, you know, typically, there are, there are trauma-based approaches for the school day. I'm not hugely in favor of that because I think then it's very difficult to get that child regulated and back into the, the day. So that wouldn't be a referral that I think any of our counselors would be in favor of for the school setting.
But other kids could be having like an anxiety about something like in their day or in their classroom. And so doing the work during the day to help get the child back to.
Right.
The room.
Right, and giving them those tools and that, you know, working through this. With, I think the big piece too is that family component. You know, so not only will that, you know, mental health therapist be working with the child, but then they'll be working with the family to then use those strategies beyond the school day, which I think, you know.
This be traditional like fifty-five minute sessions or?
I, I think it would be about fifty-minute sessions, but I think it depends on the child, the age of the child. I think they bill for fifty minutes. But that might be something that we.
And you can remember, in the moment, right, our counseling staff is dealing with that. Because these counselors will not be on site every day, all day.
Right, right.
So the, in the moment where the child needs to decompress and, and talk through things for that hour, that's our counseling staff, that's our school adjustment counselor, that's, that's what's happening with them. It's, it's the finding of the, the students who don't have the supports on a continual basis or be able to get that support outside of school is what we're trying to address. So I think it's, it's good stuff. It's, it's just giving our families another resource, that's what we're doing.
And, and with the partnership, is there any, you know, you know, in, is, is, are, are they foregoing any privacy or anything like that? Is, is the information going to be shared with our, by, by default with our, with our counselors here? Or is that still only going to be?
The clinical piece.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. So it would work just the same way that it works when you have counseling outside of school. So parents can sign a release of information, which many, most, most of them do, so that our counselors can then speak.
So, 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 so by taking advantage of it, it doesn't obligate them to, to wait?
No, no, if a parent opts out of that piece, you know, I think it is ideal for them. I think it's a better, better for, you know, community counselors and our school counselors to be working together so that we can then provide those supports to our kids in the school setting. But absolutely, we would completely respect that if a parent didn't, and, you know, that, both our counselors and the outside counselors will take that very seriously, so.
Who's got the motion?
So, so, so I'm wondering whether we should adjust the, the motion just because, you know, so as opposed to saying we, we approved the creation of the partnership.
Well, superintendent, during, during.
So, so I, I moved to authorize superintendent to enter into a partnership between national public schools and Advocates Community Counseling.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you so much.
For all that work and for sitting through two hours of our meeting to get to that point. Appreciate that.
It's exciting to hear Dr. Tyra's all.
Lots going on.
Yes.
I was just thinking about all the SEL possibilities with all those different.
It all fits together, doesn't it? Yeah, perfect, thank you.
So we have, we have just a couple more things, I know Kathy's seven o'clock.
Well, I just.
No, no, but we're not voting on the policy yet?
I had wanted to go to Finn's wrestling and I thought we would be done.
And, and, and you, you already know what we're going to talk about next, so.
You should go.
No, I had, I had to read my warrants and all that, so.
Is there anything on the, the animals in schools policy that we need to vote on?
No, that was the first read.
Okay.
We're not voting, I just wanted to get in front of them.
Why don't you read your warrant now and go?
Oh, all right, really?
Yeah, absolutely.
Then Paul and Jim could fill you in on what we've added to this.
Yeah, we're not voting.
Yeah, we're not voting.
Yes, it's simply to review, yep.
And we wanted you to look at it now, so you can start thinking about it.
Okay.
We will have a forum, parents here.
Oh, right, okay. Like I only saw.
Well, there's three at the moment, I won't leave till I tag somebody. Oh, wait, I got to get my warrants, I'm sorry.
Focus, come on.
I know, I'm focusing, sorry. Here it is, my blurb. Thank you. Oh, you want me to, oh, thanks.
There you go.
All right, this is easier, thank you.
I'm hoping to get you to wrestle.
Okay, thank you. Between January eighth, two thousand nineteen and January twenty-second, no, wait, 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 that's not right. Two thousand nineteen?
Oh, twenty twenty.
Should be twenty twenty, okay, let me start again. Between January eighth, twenty twenty and January twenty-second, twenty twenty, I, Kathleen Bates, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of three hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred ninety dollars and twenty-two cents. This includes general fund expenses of two hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Evolving expenses of eighty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars and twenty cents. And grant expenses of two thousand, one hundred eleven dollars and sixteen cents. Meals tax expenses of one hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. Finally, I authorize payroll in the amount of one million, ninety-five thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars and seven cents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, okay.
Great powerful signature.
Yeah, now you're going to sign this.
Is that all you need?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Sign that and then thank you for allowing me to exit the meeting.
Want to be a parent?
You want me to say, and I want to be a parent, that's all.
Yeah, thanks, Kathy.
I want to be a parent for my.
Okay, so Paul, do you want to talk about the policy?
So as you're aware, we have someone who's going, in the, in the process of getting a, a therapy dog. So we will have a therapy, therapy dog in our district on an ongoing basis. So when we initially crafted the animals in schools policy, the new one, it was really geared towards visiting teams. So we wanted to revisit it to look at what it means when we have what we're, you know, and I'll go over the verbiage, an in-house team, so one that's regularly here and that as part of the person's normal duties going to be doing that. So, so that, that's the, that's the updated policy. Let me just bring up that along with these other notes here. So what Jim, Jim sent out is.
I think in blue.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so the changes are in blue.
So in the definitions section, we added the, the definition of what it means to be an in-house therapy team. So having that, that district or municipal employee that's in our buildings regularly, that isn't invited in but on an ongoing basis essentially. And then some of the other things were relative to what it means for the accommodations that we've talked about in the past with the policy, where, hey, you know, if someone who was an employee happened to bring their therapy dog or therapy animal into the school, what accommodations they would need to have in place should that conflict with their normal duties? Well, now, we wanted to say, okay, it's not just what if, but how, if we are going to have an in-house team, what do we, what do we want there? So we have some things in there that talk about, you know, that you have to have comfortable accommodations when not performing therapy services. Because that's one of the other differences. When you have an in-house therapy team, that person and animal are, are there for seven hours a day, right? That team is not going to be performing therapy services for seven hours, right? That's not, not very good for either, right? So that means during the, during the school day, that animal needs downtime, right? Then there need, there needs to be an accommodation for a comfortable, safe, safe location, away from hustle and bustle that, that, that animal can, can chill. Right, so the, the, the policy as it was written didn't have that in there because, hey, if some, if someone were to come on site, the duration of their visit, they're performing the services, when they're done, they leave, right? So this, this addresses that. It addresses, you know, what it, you know, now that you're there for, for seven hours, things like food, it, it expresses that, you know, you should still make an effort to not feed the dog, have its regular meals during the school day. But if you do make, you know, make sure you're doing it in a prudent way, if you do need to feed the dog, make sure it's, you know, you know, it kind of, you know, private setting away from, you know, different things. There's also, hey, now, you're not just going to have a dog on premises for two, three hours here every day for seven hours. So you'll need to address things like, where are you going to take the dog to handle their business, right? So, you know, the, the building principal along with facilities need to say, okay, here's where I want you to do this. Not, and, and in the previous policy, there was, you know, you had the, we had the option of providing a way to dispose of waste. Now, we need to have that, right? So we need to know what, what that, what that handler needs to do with that waste. And so that's what outlined with a lot of those, those things in blue around, around that. Let's see, what else do we have? It talks a little about the approval. At, at our next subcommittee meeting, I'm probably going to throw out a couple of other things here. We talked about, you know, how the, the teams are approved and reviewed. So, and what that looks like, there's a, there's a section on that. I also want to put in there, you know, work with Jim on the language, but, you know, we also want to address what it means, say, hey, it, it's at the discretion of the building principal and superintendent that at any, any point in time, they can say, no, this isn't working, or don't do this for this amount of time, whatever the case is. And then potentially, you know, I'll put something in there about appealing or what, what that process looks like. So we have that in place because we don't, we certainly don't want it to, you know, and I don't, you know, this isn't about anything that's currently going on or any one person. But we certainly don't want to have a situation where someone believes, hey, I've been approved, you can't tell me I can't bring my dog now that you approved me. And we want to make sure that the, the policy has, you know, has that protection there that, that it's at the discretion of the superintendent and building principal. But also, you know, if they feel that something's not been handled properly, that they can appeal to the superintendent or school committee or whatever the appropriate method is. That's, that's the, that's the essent, essence of the changes. It was really just to address what it means to be different. There's also one of the other changes we made, and I, I think I'm even going to slightly modify the verbiage on there as it related to food and treats where we prohibited it before. But we, we added some verbiage in there that, that says unless it's part of the therapy program, protocols. And I, I want to add required part, you know, that way we still say we do not, you know, if it's optional.
Unless it's required.
Right, you know, so for instance, if Jen says, no, listen, this is what they, I'm supposed to be doing.
Right.
And to, to maintain this, and if that's part of needs is, you know, protocols, then we want to allow that.
Okay.
But if somebody else says, well, yeah, I have that option too, I want to do it. Well, no, unless, unless it's, unless it's required or needed to maintain, you know, something, then we, we still don't want that to be, be in there. We want to maintain the original. But it would have posed, Jen had mentioned that needs is protocols do incorporate that. So we wanted to make sure we addressed that, that's the only other change.
Excellent, thank you, good work.
Great job.
Yeah.
So I.
It's so exciting too.
It is exciting, I'm. It is exciting. I'm just gonna follow up on a couple of things, just in terms of, of process. Uh, obviously, this is the first read around the voting on it tonight. But Jen is actually this, all this week, is actually in the process of, of training.
Yep.
Um, and we will be sending out through the high school, because it's a high school-based, uh, letters, uh, to the families, the entire high school staff.
I, I, I didn't mention the notification part of it, yeah.
With regard to notifying families that there will be a dog on site, uh, therapy dog. But also, if there are fears, allergies, et cetera, that they need to report that to the school as well. So we can ensure that, um, if, if, if Jen, you know, brought the dog in the classroom, so we identify the appropriate students. So that will go out through Kelly's listserv, uh, as well as, uh, I think at the end of the week, so.
Yeah, so in, in the, in the approval section that was added, I, I neglected to mention that, uh, we also talk about notifications. So if we're introducing a new in-house therapy team, uh, you know, particularly if it's, you know, I mean, I think we're gonna send it out district-wide, but we're certainly gonna send it out.
I will send it out district-wide, just so you know, I'm just, it's going out.
But we're gonna make sure it's sent out if the, if, for instance, if Jen's obviously gonna mainly be at the high school, while the dog is gonna be, uh, available district-wide, and she could certainly, you know, go to Mendez or whatever, um, we have to do it, you know, the, the policy says you have to do it at the building level that the, that the, that the, um, that the person works in, so.
Excellent, good work, very exciting.
And thank you to, to Jen and Kelly for coming over and spending time with us to, we, the five of us worked on this together. And, uh, their input was invaluable, so.
So exciting.
So.
What's the pup's name?
Well, we can't say.
Nothing yet, until this week. Jen will divulge on Friday.
Is it going out in your newsletter?
It'll go out in hers, and then I'm gonna, in Kelly's, but I'll, I'll include it in mine as well.
Um, and so just on, on timing, one of the reasons I asked Jim to put this on here is because, um, the timeframe is, I believe, end of the month.
Yep.
You know, um, uh.
It'll be a visiting, uh, therapy dog until then.
Visi- visi- visiting next month, so at our next meeting, we'll want to have something we can approve.
And Jen will be here.
Can, uh, well, that's what I was gonna ask, but.
She will be here.
Wait, what, which meeting is this?
February twenty-sixth.
February twenty-sixth.
The February meeting, she'll be here.
Yeah.
She'll be here.
Excellent.
They will be here.
Yeah.
The team will be here.
I have an idea for that, yeah.
Okay.
Let's get through this.
Any, any, any questions, uh, about any of the, any updates pending, Dad, or?
No, there was a, there was a little spelling error, but I told Jim.
I got it, I got it, take care, yep.
That was his.
That was my fault, I, I typed it, it's on me.
He, he, he didn't want me updating this for some reason, he wanted to do it, so.
All right, it's done.
You got enough going on.
It's done, um, okay, moving forward. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, just, uh, real quick, uh, today, the governor had his, um, initial House One budget came out. Uh, you know, the, while a lot of work went into the Student Opportunities Act and Chapter Seventy, funding formula adjustments, uh, you know, as I've said here before, I wouldn't expect us to have a tremendous increase, uh, just based on, um, population as well. I, I, our numbers increased from a Chapter Seventy standpoint by about twenty-two kids this year. Uh, our Chapter Seventy increase is about two hundred thousand dollars, which is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than I anticipated, to be honest. I thought we were going to be in the level of, uh, held harmless, meaning, um, our, we'd be getting the minimum student.
Thirty dollars a kid or something.
Yeah, thirty, not right. So, so I was pleasantly surprised, uh, certainly, uh, Mike Herbert said to me, he was like, oh, don't get me wrong, I'm thankful, but I certainly thought we'd get a lot more. I said, listen, the way it was designed, the, the inner cities, the, the equity of, of providing resources in those cities, who've been lagging behind as well, um, certainly, uh, will benefit greatly. Locally, Holliston and Medway, just as a frame of reference, only got the per pupil aid. And they had increases in students as well. We benefited from the adjustment to the formula because of the types of students that we have within our system. The, the impoverished students, the, the ELL students and the special education students. When, so that when they adjusted those factors, and I haven't dug too deeply into the, the intricacies yet of each of the, um, increments, and I will, uh, over the next couple of days, um, but just so we know that that's occurring. We've been interviewing for the Director of, of Finance and Operations the last two days. Thank you Lori and Paul and the other group members who were, uh, participating on the screening committee. You know, we've gotten through the interviews and I'm gonna do some reference checks and determine what our next phase is. Um, we're hoping on February twenty-sixth, we're still on pace to have individuals come here, as the school committee is obligated to interview and appoint. Still looking at July one start date. And, and lastly.
A big meeting.
Uh-huh, it, it'll be a very big meeting.
February twenty-sixth is a big meeting.
Yeah, it will be. Um, there was one other thing. Oh, tomorrow, Paul and I will be attending, uh, the MASSS Midwinter Conference, where we will learn a little bit more from the Commissioner with regard to, um, some of the new requirements, again, that come out of the Student Opportunities Act with, um, I don't wanna call them strategic plans or improvement plans, but, um, we'll learn a little bit more about that tomorrow.
The documentation that's required.
Documentation that we need with, and again, there's a long form and a short form, there are two different forms. We don't know where we land and how much money we're getting based on that until, over the next couple of days.
And, and, and you're talking about the piece where you have to document how your closing team.
Closing gaps, correct, right. And it'd be very different for communities that are getting millions of dollars versus ours, that I don't know specifically what is allocated to us for that piece.
Gotcha.
So, we'll have a very limited, um, process. But they're encouraging school committees to have this on, on, um, the calendar for March, uh, to vote on this, cause you're required to vote and, and as part of the process, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so we'll be dealing with that, but that's it.
Did you have anything, Paul?
I'll be very brief. Um, I know it's been a lot of time talking about literacy and this big initiative, Dr. Kyra touched on it. Um, but we all know, kids can't read and write, everything else falls down. Um, excited about a professional development opportunity that I just wanted to share. Um, twice a year, Lucy Corkins, who works out of Columbia University, hosts two, um, PD days that are free and open to anyone. Um, we opened it up to staff, and as of probably about an hour ago, we have thirty teachers signed up to go.
Wow.
Uh, just in frame of reference, um, ten teachers per grade level, five gr- grade lev- six grade levels, add to that speech, some speech and some reading teachers, you're looking at about sixty-five teachers, so almost half of our teachers have signed up to go. What makes that even more awesome and speaks to the dedication of the teachers and the excitement of it is, this is a Saturday workshop, where we're departing from the middle school at four in the morning, driving to New York City, spending about seven or eight hours in the city for the workshop, and then coming back around ten, eleven o'clock at night. So teachers are doing it on their own time, um, and they're excited about it. So I think that speaks to the program, but also to the dedication of the staff, um, for the kids, so pretty excited to share that.
Great news. Minutes, anybody have anything on the January eighth minutes?
No, I think, thought they were good.
Do we have a motion?
I, I, I mean, I didn't look at, did, did we, we, we didn't say Nicole was here or anything, right? Actually saw her the other day over at, uh, tomorrow's.
Yeah, she's up sick today, so.
Do we have a motion?
Um, I move to accept the meeting minutes of January eighth to twenty twenty as presented.
I always am staying when I'm not there, so you can't vote, cause you're, can't vote on the minutes.
Well, can you, if I have an exception?
You can absolutely vote on the minutes, you don't feel bad.
I know, I never have, though. I never vote on the minutes when I'm not there.
Might as well.
Do I have to, so that they, it can pass, cause you need the quorum?
No, you, so you, if you need to have a quorum to host, hosting meeting, uh, the minimum amount is, that is not constitute a majority, it's a majority of the current, of the voting members in attendance.
Okay, I'm still abstaining, okay, sorry.
Aye.
Two oh one.
Um, acceptance of.
Yeah, we have some gifts, please. A hundred and fifty dollars to help our own fund, uh, the Tosti family, the National High School Activities Make-A-Wish. The Tosti family, a hundred and fifty dollars as well. Uh, three cricket games and balls for the Warren School, uh, estimated value of three hundred dollars from, uh, Vijayesh Hassan and Navinus. Um, to, they had a wonderful, I didn't, it wasn't, didn't go up because I had a meeting, but, um, Ms. Carrick, uh, Ms. McCarrick had a, had a group come in and teach the kids cricket, it was awesome, it was, uh, it was neat. Uh, lovations, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, uh, for new wrestling mat, um, donated to the wrestling team. Staples, twenty-five dollars for HS Activities, um, Model UN, Longhorn Steakhouse, twenty dollars, Model UN, Dairy Queen, twenty dollars, Model UN, TJ's, uh, Food and Spirits, fifty dollars for Model UN, Marathon Deli, twenty-five dollars, Model UN.
Are those all, all of those gift cards?
They're all gift cards for their events, yep. Um, uh, Model UN, uh, for Price Shopper, uh, Stop and Shop, twenty-five dollars, Model UN again. For a total of fifty thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars in gifts and donations.
Excellent, do we have a motion? So moved.
Well, how about we say, I move to, uh, approve the gifts and donations as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We didn't have a motion, what do you want me to say?
All right, number updates. Erin.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, we had, uh, obviously had a policy subcommittee meeting, uh, since our last one. Uh, we had Karen Spoca's, uh, SCL event, uh, which was, uh, wa- very well attended, um, went, uh, went very well. So thank her for hosting that. Some other building committee stuff, but not really anything else.
Yep, nothing to add, I've been on the interview team for the, um, business position, other than that.
Who's asking, who's asking the question whether they can deal with, uh, with Jim or not?
I've been a silent observer the entire time.
It's a silent question, I'm just kind of assessing, I'm looking at them, and I'm like, can they or can't they?
February twenty-sixth.
Can they deal with Mr. Ed?
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask that question.
Yeah.
Um, action items, they haven't changed.
They have not changed, and, but the dates have changed, I made sure they were fixed.
The dates have changed, so let's take a look at that, since you made the effort.
They're, they're adjusted.
Everything's happening in twenty twenty.
Yes.
Spring, summer, winter, February, all good.
Yep, spring, summer, winter, fall.
Excellent.
All you gotta do is call, okay?
All right, James.
Lunchies, two hours and a half, this is the longest school committee meeting I've had in six years.
We thought it was gonna be very quick. Go blame.
Sorry, it'd be a pain, we were gonna put Columbus Day on like a, some.
Is it not on there? It was on there.
It's not on the actions.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I thought.
Cause when are we doing the calendar for next?
It won't be.
We've already done the calendar.
We've already done it for next year.
It was on there for a while, we must have, did we take it off for a reason?
Yeah, cause I thought we did, I thought it was taken off because the town wasn't dealing with it. I thought that's why we took it off.
Yeah, I mean, at the last meeting, we decided that I would check in with them, um, and that was a no.
Right.
Um.
So then we can move on our own.
We could, I, but I, I thought.
Maybe that's another summer discussion.
Yeah, we can put it back on. I, I, I was under the impression at that meeting that we decided to take it off from the action item, because the town wasn't moving with it.
If the town was a no, then we were a no?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's how I remember the conversation going, but.
Over the summer.
Yeah, I don't like kicking it until the summer, we talked about it last, or like it was.
Right, but I thought the, the feeling of the committee was, we're, we were only interested in going further if they were.
Right.
I thought we were checking with them first, and then, and then gonna make a determination.
We could put it back on.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah.
We did check in then.
Yeah, when, when we put it back on, then we have, uh, everybody here, we can see, uh, what the appetite is, what we want.
Yeah, like, like, obviously, the February meeting sounds really packed.
Definitely not then.
Right, so like.
The calendar's done, but we can always adjust.
Right, and I think that's what you said, like, let's, we didn't have to have it by the time we were voting on the calendar, because if we decided to change it, we can always go back and change the published calendar.
Yeah.
Uh, which is in the timeframe where you were checking with the board.
Yeah.
Um, I just don't wanna kick this can, yeah, like.
It's fine.
Yeah.
We have an opportunity, we, we're being progressive in so many other areas.
Yep.
All right, so I will just put it down, but we can put the date, uh, next to it after we have a chance to check in with everybody else. How's that?
Yeah.
All right.
It's fine.
Okay.
Cool.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.